Town of Groton Plan and zoning commission meeting is called the org and let's have roll call. Uh, Hal.
Here.
Jeffrey.
Here.
Steve.
Here.
Michael.
Here.
Kevin.
Here.
Lauren. And then I guess Clint's uh.
Clint is actually coming over here.
Oh, there you go. Hi, Clint. Super. So full house tonight.
Good evening all.
Good evening. So tonight we'll start off with a public hearing. See, how would you find me reading a notice?
Notice is hereby given that the following public hearing will be held. Will be held Tuesday, April twenty second, twenty twenty five at seven P M. Community room two town hall annex one, three, four, Groton Long Point Road and virtually via the Zoom platform to hear the following. Zoning Regulation Amendment R E G A twenty five dash zero, 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 one. Text Amendment to one amend section five point one dash eight point B. Active senior housing community. To allow active senior housing in the I M zone subject to conditions and a special permit to and to add the I M zone to subsection two. Minimum lot area. And subsection five allowed dwelling types. Two amend sections five point one dash eight point G. Multi unit dwellings to allow multi unit dwellings in the I M zone. Subject to conditions. Three amend section five point one dash eight point H. Multi unit dwellings conversion. To allow multi unit dwelling conversions in the I M zone subject to conditions and special permit. Four amend section four point one table of permitted uses to reflect the proposed changes to permitted use in the I'm in the uses in the I M zone. And five amend section eight point one dash six buffer area. A Zoom meeting link will be posted to the town's website and meeting calendar. Applications are in file and available for public inspection during normal business hours at the planning department, one, three, four, Groton Long Point Road, Groton, Connecticut, zero, six, three, four, zero. And at the office of the Groton Town Clerk, forty five Fort Hill Road, Groton, Connecticut. The proposed draft zonings. Regulations can also be viewed. I'm going to read all that or at the town website.
That's it, yeah.
Uh, all persons having interest in the applications are invited to attend, comment and provide testimony and evidence.
Great, thank you. Okay, at this point, um, would you like to make a presentation? Um, come soon.
Good evening. Uh, can everybody hear me okay? My name is Bill Sweeney, um, and I'm a partner and land use attorney at the law firm of Togan Carberry in New London. And as always, it's a pleasure to be here before you tonight. I'm appearing on behalf of the Downs Patterson Corporation. Which has submitted an application for a zoning text amendment. To modify the permitted uses allowed in your mixed use industrial district, also known as the I M district. Uh, joining me tonight online is a principal of my client, Mark Holden. Uh, over the last few months, we've appeared before you in an informal workshop capacity to share and refine my client's concept. Of allowing the I M district to truly be a mixed use zone. And permit multifamily residential development within it. Uh, we've adopted some of the suggestions and recommendations of this commission for this effort as well as those of your staff. And tonight we are presenting the final version of the zoning text amendment for your consideration. Uh, as this change, um, uh, as this uh, application involves a change to your zoning regulations, tonight you sit in your legislative capacity. In reviewing our application. And you're charged by state statute to consider the consistency of the proposal with your plan of conservation and development. As well as your comprehensive plan for zoning, which are your zoning regulations and your zoning map read together. Further, you have the choice of approving the amendment as proposed, denying it. Or making changes to it. And approving proposal with those modifications. As I've shared previously with you, my client owns approximately a hundred and forty acres of land. Um, vacant land located to the north of exit eighty eight along Interstate nine, I ninety five and easterly of route one seventeen. Just north of the Mystic Marriott Hotel and Spa. Most of this land is located in the I M district and it's remained undeveloped for many years. There's approximately a hundred additional acres owned by other parties along this same stretch of one seventeen. That similarly remain vacant and underutilized. And there's another several hundred acres of vacant land farther to the east in the I M district. Along Flanders Road. Like most of the parcels in the I M district, my client's property faces development constraints, including areas of wetlands. Flood plains, steep slopes and shallow depth to bedrock soils, which create challenges to the prototypical. Homogenous, large scale industrial development, like many may imagine occurs in a classic industrial park. And despite concerted efforts by my client to market or develop their site for typical industrial uses. These challenging site conditions combined with both limited utility infrastructure and a soft demand for industrial space has presented significant obstacles. For the use of the property. However, in recently, my client has received significant interest in utilizing the developable portions of its property for multifamily residential development. While the I M district claims to be a mixed use zone, it permits a wide variety of commercial and industrial uses. Along with assortment of somewhat peculiar uses as well, multi unit dwellings are oddly not permitted. And we're not sure if that's it was an intentional decision or was it unintentional oversight? But a mixed use zone that does not allow any form of multifamily development is very unusual. It's not what you would typically expect. The very purpose of the I M district as stated in your regulations is to accommodate lower impact industrial uses. In proximity to residences to attract both modern manufacturers and their employees. From our perspective, what better approach could there be to allow those same employees to live within the district adjacent to the places they work? In the distant past, residential development was typically excluded from industrial areas. But in modern times, most communities have recognized the value of allowing people to live near where they work to minimize vehicular trips. And to develop creative mixed use communities. Further, we've learned, as we've learned over the course of our workshops with you, uh, Groton is wrestling with meeting uh, both the regional demand for additional multifamily units. As well as a community of demand for new workforce housing. I know you have some other applications later in your agenda tonight, though, address that directly. The overall arching purpose of of the proposed text amendments, though, being proposed tonight. Um, would be to permit a variety of multiple dwelling uses in the I M district. And as I mentioned, the I M district purports to be a mixed use district. But a mixed mixed use zone that doesn't allow any type of multifamily really undermines a critical opportunity. To accommodate modern and sought after housing options for residents and people moving into the community. Additional provisions for home based businesses were added at the request of your staff. As well as from the commission, an internal buffer requirement was also added to the proposed amendments at your, uh, the specific request of the commissioner. So at this time, I'd like to go just briefly through the text amendment itself. Um, and the text amendment is fairly simple and straightforward. Uh, the first set of changes um, that are proposed are actually to table four point one. Of your zoning regulations. This is the table of permitted uses. And you'll see if you look in the um, the column for industrial districts under the I M district, the first change. Currently, active senior housing is prohibited in the zone. We're proposing to make that a special permit use subject to conditions. Outlined in section five point one, eight point B. We also are um, changing the multi unit dwelling. Um, uh, regulation, uh, requirement for permitted uses in the I M. Apparently it is prohibited. We're proposing to allow that by site plan approval, subject to conditions outlined in five point one, eight point G. We're also allowing uh, multi unit dwelling conversions. Um, again, this is currently prohibited in the I M, but we are suggesting that to be allowed by special permit, again, subject to conditions. Contained in five point one, eight point H. And then uh, at the request of staff, we've also added um, uh, taken the provision away for home based businesses in the I M zone. We do have some residences. Single family residences in in that zone. Uh, and this would be allowed as an accessory use, obviously, subject to the conditions of five point one, uh, one point D. So in addition to the table, we also went into the text just for completeness. Um, we went to section five point one, eight B, active senior housing, added the I M district as a. Um, a permitted district for that type of use. Uh, we also included um, it uh, in the minimum lot area standard. Um, and for uh, the allowed dwelling types, uh, we also included I M, um, I M would be. Um, the minimum ladder would be important with the underlying zoning district, uh, minimum lot area. And the dwelling types is for the I M district would be the product types allowed would be townhouses and multi unit developments. Um, we also uh, went into five point one, eight point G, which is the multi unit dwelling section. Again, making clear that the I M zone now allows uh, multi unit dwelling development. And again, five point one, eight point H, we've added I M as an allowable zoning district for multi unit dwellings conversion thereof. Uh, and finally, in uh, section eight point one, six in buffer area. Um, we have required um, a requirement for buffers um, for um, residential projects um, in the I M. Uh, we've added to eight, one, six point B that active senior housing, multi unit dwelling or multi unit dwelling conversion use. On any lot in the I M that is a budding or directly across the street from any other lot in the I M requires a buffer. We also um, uh, in the design standards under eight point one, six point C, we've uh, made clear that that these types of um. Uh, multi uh, unit dwellings, the active senior housing, the multi unit dwelling or the multi unit dwelling conversion. Um, uses in the I M a budding or directly across a local street from any other lot in the I M has a thirty foot buffer. And this was really in response to a concern that a commissioner made. That we don't want to put neighbors in close proximity to industrial uses that may be incompatible. And then have issues with concerns about privacy or noise or screening. So if you're going to do. A multi unit um, uh, project in the I M zone, you're going to need to buffer it on your own lot and keep it separate and provides privacy and screening for your residents. Um, so that is sort of the sum of the changes. They're very modest. Um, but I do think there's a solid legal basis supporting these changes that I just want to review with you uh, quickly. Um, both the plan of conservation and development and recent housing studies have identified an overwhelming need for housing in Groton. Which is estimated to have a deficit right now of almost sixty five hundred units driven primarily by the electric boat expansion. In particular, the community has a pressing demand for additional multifamily units as well as especially workforce housing. The existing I M district is well positioned for new housing opportunities. As the large blocks of land that in the past were easily built upon are already developed. What's remaining are vacant of vacant developable land in the district is really broken up into smaller, more discreet areas that would lend themselves to residential. Or mixed use development options. Further, I think we're all aware that local citizens citizens have objected to larger scale industrial projects. Uh, in the zone like data centers, for example. And and by promoting a variety of less intensive development options, particularly housing as an allowable use. Uh, which generally also has less of an environmental footprint, um, that would make perfect sense with what the community is looking for. Um, these smaller undeveloped areas of the district are also often adjacent to natural areas or located in the water resource protection district. And they may not quite frankly be entirely suitable for larger scale industrial development. Uh, they may still serve as reasonable sites for smaller industrial uses, but we believe they're very well positioned. For targeted residential communities or mixed use projects where housing is built alongside smaller industrial uses. Uh, as noted in the plan of conservation and development, uh, Groton must realize the value of capturing new workers as residents. And keeping their disposable income within the community. And this text amendment will certainly allow for additional opportunities to do just that. Uh, I think your staff report that Bryce prepared was very comprehensive. I would point out that there are three recommendations in your P O C D that specifically speak to this proposal. First is recommendation three, three dash fourteen, which instructs the commission to revise the residential zoning north of I ninety five. To promote appropriate development patterns, taking into account of natural resources, infrastructure or lack thereof, transportation and sewer avoidance areas. Also, recommendation three dash twenty two directs the commission to analyze the zoning and allowed uses. Of currently vacant industrially and commercially zoned land with respect to the availability of utilities, transportation and constraints. Imposed by sensitive natural resources and revise the zoning and allowed uses as appropriate. Finally, recommendation three uh, dash twenty three further recommends the commission catalog key industrial. And um, commercial vacant properties to determine developable acreage and get and got and to guide development away from sensitive resources. All of these things, uh, um, uh, all of these recommendations really follow and are supported, uh, support, uh, approval of the proposed. Um, text amendments. I would go on further to note that page one dash twenty six of the P O C D discusses community survey results. Which show strong support for maximizing the use of Groton's industrial areas and pursuing new options for mixed use concepts in these same areas. Uh, the P O C D also has a number of growth management principles, uh, growth management principle number two. Uh, is uh, it uh, it reads to expand housing opportunities and design choices to accommodate a variety of household types and needs. Certainly allowing multifamily unit housing in the I M district furthers that uh, growth management principle. Now, that being said, I I would acknowledge that the P O C D's specific recommendations for industrial zoning. Does do not explicitly reference an expansion of residential in the I M district or even mixed use for that matter. But it is important to acknowledge that the P O C D is just a snapshot of community priorities when it was written back in two thousand sixteen. Uh, that was almost a decade ago. It was well before the full understanding of the electric boat expansion need and the resulting impact on the region's housing stock. Uh, finally, uh, I would submit to you that the proposed zoning text amendment is also consistent with Groton's affordable housing plan. Even though housing affordability is the focus of that document, several goals and recommendations contained in that plan. Uh, are tied directly to expanding general housing opportunities en masse across the community. To attract industry and employers and and housing for the employees of those employers. Uh, so tonight we would ask for your support of these modest changes to encourage multifamily housing development within the I M district. These are changes we've reviewed before before with you in the workshop setting. From our perspective, these text amendments are modest and they're the most effective approach to reach. The desired end to provide some additional housing opportunity in the zone. Does not require wholesale rezoning of the I M district. And most importantly, I think it does not foreclose out the possibility of smaller and sensitively designed industrial projects in the same area. Which quite frankly might be best suited to mixed use development scenarios where you have housing built right alongside workplaces. So I want to thank you for your time and attention, not only tonight, but for the workshops that we've had over the last couple of months. I'm more than happy to answer any questions, uh, but that concludes my presentation. I reserve the right rebuttal. Thank you.
Thank you, Attorney Sweeney.
Yeah, yeah, this is mine. Um, so all required referrals have been made for this application. Uh, it bears repeating, the I M zone is kind of peculiar in the town in that it it isn't within five hundred feet of other jurisdictions. So those kind of referrals weren't necessarily required. Um, notices to Groton Utilities and State Department of Health were made and today have no comments in return. Uh, no communications have been received regarding this application outside of a um. A nice communication about how nice the narrative was. So kudos. Uh, people enjoyed that. So again, this application um. Or multi unit uh, development in general still requires water and sewer. There are areas of the I M zone uh, that do not have that. Um, so expansion would be required for for those particular reasons. Um. Let's see, what else? Uh, the home based business I wanted to touch on. So um, the change has been made or the applicant has made the change in the table of uses. Yet that section, um, section five point one dash one dot D, um, does not have the I M zone listed. Um, so. Um, we need to return to that at some point to make that that cohesive. Um. And then as as Bill mentioned, uh, the topography in the area, the the considerations, environmental considerations. Uh, do constrain development uh, significantly. Um, but yeah, that's about it.
Okay, great. I guess at this um, time we'll open it up if anyone from the public has anything they would like to say. They could come forward at this time. Well, you're very quiet out there. I guess I'll. I'll entertain a motion or I'll make a motion. Close of public hearing.
No, I think we should.
Oh, what do we do next? Cause.
We should have any input from.
Oh, that's right.
Commission.
Sorry, I'm rusty. Yes, that's right, next.
That's why you aren't.
So, yeah, um, and. I know normally we do it going down. It's been our president. I'm happy to do that tonight. Just for consistency, we decided to venture on. So, Michael, if you.
I I don't have any comments. I'm good.
Okay.
Um, I I don't have any comments too. This all sounds fine to me. I'll bring up after the fact. I'll do it now just to be sure, but.
Sure, I'd much rather be able to answer.
You'll have nothing to do with this. It'll be fine, but it's since it's addressed in this about buffering, I I will be raising the idea of. Better defining buffering. Because something that just just looking at what we've got, it seems pretty good, but if a. Four story apartment building goes next to a three story. Noisy thing, our buffering doesn't cap doesn't cover it very well.
I I would agree with you that your general buffering section probably needs to be revisited.
Yeah.
Because I've noticed it on the other side where you have very innocuous uses that are. Um, that's sort of hampered by pretty strict buffering requirements. So. To have some flexibility in that, I think would be a really great thing to have, but that's a probably a discussion for another day.
I think it does not have to happen with this, but we're addressing it here. So I just want to make sure it was mentioned or bring up later. It has no effect. What we're going to do here.
Good. Yeah.
And I I just had. Some minor editorial concerns with. With the proposal. In sec. In the uh. Section eight, one, six, B. What the change in four. Is enact to senior housing, multi unit dwelling. Townhouses are included. In the proposed I M. Change, so I think they should be inserted there.
I think townhouses are actually a form of dwelling type. That falls within the category of multi unit dwelling. It's a, it's a.
Well, they're defined separately in um. One of the. That's why I.
Yeah, so townhouses don't appear on your use tape.
No, no, but under. Under the previous pay page, five, one, eight, B. It says I M M T C, C N and C R zones prototype equals townhouse multi unit. So if that's were there, I think we should carry it forth. And because I I see nothing wrong with townhouses to me are like multi. Unit, but the fact I think it should agree with it.
I mean, if you wanted to add, like I said before, you can modify a text amendment. So if you want to clarify, like maybe in parentheses.
I look at it as more an editorial thing, not a change in.
Right.
What we want, just to make sure.
Multi unit dwellings are sort of the umbrella that covers. What I would call multifamily housing. And then we have different product types. Multi unit in your senior housing regulations, you talk about product types as sort of forms of that. And the word townhomes comes up. It's sort of the the individual with the dividing party wall type system. Um. Again, I I would leave it to you if you think that's necessary to add in.
Well, it's it's for consistency. I would say either take it out of. Out of the. Change in uh. Eight, five, one, eight, B, five. Take out townhouse there or just edit in just so there.
Yeah, I I didn't propose that language. That that language is actually part of your senior housing.
No. Well, it's no, it's more than, I think it's, yeah, it is. But there's nothing wrong with having townhouses, I don't.
I have no objection if you want to add the word townhouse to. The the two um, highlighted sections in eight um, dash one, six. I have no objection to that whatsoever. Again, I was trying to focus on the use table categories and not the specific product types, but. Belt and suspenders are never a bad thing.
Well, otherwise it might raise questions in. Five years from now, nobody will know what what's right or wrong. And also after. In that same section there where it just says in the I M. I think you need zone either zoning district or just district. Because you use. Above that, it talks M M V C and M T C. But the C. Tells what it is. It's a center. I M, it just. I think in other places it's called, when you use that, it's.
That that's fine. Again, I was trying to. Write with the same language that that was there, but yeah, there's no problem in adding the word district after the.
Yeah, I I look at that as just an editorial. Just so people don't get confused.
Yep, I have no problem with.
And under. The buffering area. I'm not sure that we want to allow all three choices. I I think maybe one and three should be. What's allowed and two may.
Sorry, say that again.
If you go up and design standards, it says a required buffer area must comply with at least one of the following amount of design standards. One, two or three. With details provided to support the option. I would think what we're proposing here. Should be limited to. Uh, one and three, or maybe you just want to say one.
I I think section one is only the width. Of the of the buffer.
No, you you can do. Two can is beams, I think. There are different type of buffering.
Mm hmm.
One is buffer by space, the thirty feet.
Yep.
And then three allows as existing. And I think it goes a little bit beyond that. Maybe more than thirty feet. Two talks about using beam beams and stuff. I don't know if that's, yeah, really a good buffering. And then we would, if you want to limit it to one or one and three, make to me makes.
I don't, I don't think there's any other, I think your regulation, that section is written to sort of give. Any use those those three.
No, no, I I know that.
And you're suggesting for this particular use in this zone, you want to limit the options to just one.
One and three. Well, three makes good sense too.
Yeah.
It's similar to one.
Yeah, I I think it's it's I don't have any problem with it. I think two is natural vegetation.
No, three is, three's the natural.
Two is the fencing. Actually, that's why I didn't want to get into this too much because it actually starts off saying that that the. Commission will make the ultimate decision determination of which option to be used.
And that's what it says on the top.
That's right. So it puts puts it on us to determine which ones, not which they can offer. We can reject anything. It is what we want to do. Based on that particular situation. So that's why I think this is pretty good.
But I don't know if we want to allow two.
But we can, if we if if we look at what it is and say, no, two is, there's no, is what you want to do. It allows that.
And you may decide in a particular location, it's not appropriate. And so you say, listen, I want you to go back. I want you to do the thirty feet. Of landscape buffering because that's what's appropriated in this.
For me, that's more.
I'm looking at and say, I want combinations of these and here the way it says is is either or. And that's one of the things I want to get into is I think these are. All three combined is a is very often the appropriate thing to do, depending on the surface.
That would be fine, yeah.
But so I think that's for another discussion, but right now. We have, we have that flexibility. As to which one to permit. Based on this, so we don't have to worry about what they submit and be stuck with it. So.
Control and flexibility.
It won't sneak something through that we don't, it might not be the.
So the commission's comfortable as written then? For that, adding in the the district addition to the I M. Okay, I just want to make sure on that section. Yep.
But no. No, otherwise I think this is a good proposal.
Okay, thank you. Hey, Steve.
Um, again, buffers, just clarification, when we talk buffers. You know, usually we have a parking lot that's seen. You know, adjacent to whatever. Whatever building or, you know, um, uses on the property. um, uses on the property, and the parking lot obviously is part of the buffer, or is it always from the property? Property line?
Parking lot can't be in the buffer. Those are two mutually exclusive things.
All right, just clarification, yeah.
And just be, just be clear, there's, there are already buffers in the IM, this is a special kind of buffer, this is a buffer in between uses within the IM, so it's very unique. But in the came, I think it, I think it was Commissioner Kane, but maybe I'm wrong, but he he brought up a really good point is, okay, we want to have these homes. You know, the idea is to have people living near where they work, but we don't want to create a group of angry neighbors then who say like, well, the next lot over is going to be developed for a small manufacturing facility, and now you've got, you know, fifty or a hundred residents who are against that project. Requires the developer, the housing to buffer that project from all the other uses around it, and I think it's a good, it's a good idea, and I, it's why we adopted it so quickly.
Okay, great, yep, I'm good.
Thanks.
Yeah, so I have, I have a couple of things, so I, of course, um, love maintenance using frameworks. If you really look at table four dot one, and I've mentioned this was at our workshop, attorney swing. This is not much of a change, it's, it's a very positive thing to the P L C D, which is, to me um, ten years ago, was kind of an amorphic snapshot, right? We put a lot of stuff together, we took a snapshot of it, but it wasn't that that much of a working document, what this is, my thinking is an evolution of what we should be doing in zoning, and that's why I've been very positive, as far as this is concerned. So, to me, what shows in table four dot one, is this is not many changes, this is an alignment with the rest of what we've done within Grotton, which to me is very positive, so that's why, um, without judging, I'm observing, this is a very positive type of, of application. Um, the question I have for Bryce, um, because, you know, now I had a little bit more time, and I study a lot of the other zoning throughout Connecticut and stuff, this also appears to be positive in that, we don't have to go into any school of like zones at some point, you know, which are, seem to me, always under, um not saying Lydia's, the contentious processes, I don't know, Bryce, whether you agree with that, as staff.
Probably, yes, keeping it simple is probably best. Yes, um, obviously, there are portions of the IM zone that do have to contend with water resource protection district uh, regulations though, um, but is your question more geared towards creating overlay zones explicitly for multifamily housing?
So I, um, my point is, if we can avoid, without being prescriptive, overlay zones, it's positive, if we create type of, of changes is, is what we have before this evening, it's a very positive change in the town, without putting ourselves into some sort of corner with a a developer where we, an overlay zone is, is is the first choice, and in this case, we could, we have created something that allows for flexibility to the commission, but also provides much better developer approach to townwide.
And probably more certainty and simplicity, yeah, makes it easier to, to follow, right, and to know what to expect both from a developer's point of view and the commission.
Well, it's spot zoning, you know, where it's like, you're in a zone, but you can have this in this area, you know.
Right.
And that's usually not a good.
Well, I think we all asked the applicant what they were really wanting in this zone, zone too, what kind of changes. It means that we tried to make it, we wanted to hear really what the needs were, because we're studying here in our.
I mean, I always come back to the, the thing that I drive to home to me and why, I think it's, this is a better approach than an overlays on approach, which I do in other communities all the time, or a floating zone, or a master plan zone. All you have to do is read the preamble and purpose of this zone, this is supposed to be a mixed-use zone, but then when you actually get into the uses, you're like this is just the light industrial district, like countless light industrial districts throughout the state, there's nothing mixed use about this zone at all, except that it allows restaurants. But I mean, other than that, what else does it allow? A hotel here or there, but like, this isn't mixed use, this isn't what I know is classical, like new urbanism mixed use. There's got to be that residential component, that's the idea, so I think all you're doing is correcting an oversight and bringing this zone to what it's supposed to be.
So I see it, I guess that's my last observation, this provides us at scale, the ability within Grotton to do exactly what this calls for. And that was not possible.
That's right, and to meet broader town goals, I think, there, so.
That's right.
Great, thank you.
So buffers. I'm kidding, I, um, I think I'd be very interested to see how this plays out in the form of actual applications coming in, in site plans and, and that, um, a- a- and just so I understand, this additional thirty feet between, you know, two, two different uses, would be in addition to the existing buffers.
Yeah.
So they, they add, and there's no, is there any flexibility for us to waive that? Because, because how I read it, so I'm looking at the the setbacks right now, and the buffers setbacks, right? Thirty feet all around, and then you add another foot for every foot of height above forty, so you're potentially looking at sixty feet of buffer all around, and now we're talking about an additional thirty feet between houses and, um houses and an industrial use, and well, I, I don't think that that matters, if we're saying between the housing and the chlorine factory, I'm being a little facetious here. But we want to put a six-story apartment building next to the chlorine factory, right, next to the factory, right, and we're talking, that would be sixty feet, at, you know, forty feet above or, sorry, so thirty-five feet above forty, so that sixty-five feet, and an additional thirty feet. Building, okay.
Different than buffers. But there is a building setback requirement as you go. That's the distance between the property line.
Okay, I'm glad I asked.
The facade of the building.
Yeah.
This is regardless of how high the building is. This buffer, right now, all industrial districts, abutting a residential district, get thirty feet.
Okay.
What this does is only within the IM zone between different lots. So the idea is to, if, if I've got a five-acre industri- industrially IM zoned lot, I'm going to do a small housing development in there, ideally like workforce housing. And I have other lots next door that may be, you know, a small warehouse distribution center or something. This is going to make sure that there is a buffer between those uses, which right now, there's no requirement for, because they have common zoning of industrial. Now, we're going to protect those and screen those residences from a potential existing, in existing or potential future development next door. It does not disturb the fact that if we abut a residential district, we have already a requirement for a thirty-foot buffer, and then not addressed here, there are building setbacks based on height, but on just a standard, and then addresses it by height
Okay.
as well, so there's like multiple levels of, of protection and setback, but they are in sort of different pools or buckets, so to speak.
Looking forward to seeing it in action.
Before to come back with. Thank you so much for your time tonight, yes. Thank you, no worries, I'm all set, thank you.
I did think maybe.
No worries.
Personal, um, okay. So, any other comments or? Okay, so at this point, we could close the public hearing.
To entertain a motion.
Yes, I will entertain a motion. All right, well. Well, I'll move, Steve second, so all those in favor, say aye. Oppose, abstain. Be animus. So, now, we have a draft motion. My only question, I guess first off, um, as the applicant had the chance to see the draft motion, and are you okay with it?
Yeah, and we are.
Okay, great, thank you. Yeah, I think, should we be adding townhouses in the nation too?
Consistency. Cause I'm sure we'll get a question.
And then it would be in the what, number two there? You agree with that?
Oh, I was about to ask you what, what you wanted to do.
Oh, I, well, I saw the commission actually too, but I was thinking number two and three, it seemed like you definitely.
No, no, it was the townhouse.
Cause I thought the problem was, yeah, multi-unit didn't include ten.
Yes.
Was it, was it in the buffer conversation, so that would be number five?
In a buffer.
So explicitly.
Eight, one, six, eight.
Yep.
Four. That's right.
So you can just add that as a, as a use in that, that list of uses in number five?
You know, where it says multi-unit dwelling. Townhouse or multi.
Aren't, um, aren't we a danger though of, you know, if a new style of housing comes up?
I think you're always at a, a danger, you don't, you don't have a definition.
Well, so, as, as the applicant talked about, you know, looking for that big word umbrella. You know, that covers I actually you know, multi-unit dwellings.
Yeah, but you used it in another place already.
Well, we were, we were citing that townhouses fall under.
No. Other here, where is it? In section five, one, eight, B. It says, it added IM to the, this last section, it says MTC, CN, and CR zones, product type equals townhouse comma, multi-unit. I mean, I mean, it's just for consistency.
Townhouse is a housing.
No, no.
Right, right.
Yes.
I almost liked that better.
Well, then, you want to take townhouse out of the IM.
Didn't advertise that.
Yeah.
But, but in a future, a future amendment, if you want to do that, we can.
Well, I don't.
I, I think it's cleaner.
What?
You get townhouse out of here, it doesn't really belong where it was there.
Okay.
Because, you're right, we'll come up with garden apartments, we'll come up with something other thing.
Garden apartments, condominiums.
And, and there might be an opportunity in the future to do a cleanup order like this, right?
You want to just say, IM, add a new line that says IM, product type equals multi-unit? That's you know. I, I think they're trying to take a shortcut to.
Multi-unit dwelling and multi-unit dwelling convert, conversion.
You know, with the future regulation amendment, you can add some cleanup.
Well, that's why I was just thinking that we could add the, leave it add the, the townhouse to the multi-use in the, the other section, so we're consistent with the change.
What's the risk? Right, we, we've advertised something that we understand, the, the risk is minimal for what we've advertised, right? We don't need to make that change, except in the future, like. I don't know, I just don't see the risk for now, I understand the precision that Jeff is asking though.
Yeah, just to be consistent.
Well, we're saying, these two ways to be consistent with this one thing, and one is to get rid of it in the other place, and that will make this consistent. And maybe a better idea, because it probably doesn't, I think we're agreeing, it probably didn't belong there. That would, I will have to do that later, but that's fine, right, so in time being, nothing bad is going to happen in the next six weeks.
That's right. No risk.
Are you okay with that?
I just, I don't, I just want to be consistent.
Or how would you change this? What's your idea on the motion?
No, I, I would have just changed added the townhouse after multi-unit dwelling. Add the senior housing, multi-unit dwelling, townhouse or multi-unit dwelling conversion.
Cause this splits a multi-unit and an active senior. In the motion.
No, uh, active senior housing is a separate thing.
It's right, but should you have townhouses in each one?
No.
I mean, to me, when I talk about act, or I hear active senior, I don't think.
No, I'd have active senior housing, multi-unit dwelling. Townhouse or multi-unit dwelling conversion. Cause we're allowing townhouse.
The way I, I see this conversation, it's pretty much like, a square is a rectangle, but a rectangle's not a square, a townhome is a multifamily dwelling unit. And so I think it's included in there, and I don't think we need to change it.
Whereas, well, the, it is changed over in the other section.
Changed over in what section?
No, in section five, one, eight, B.
It just mentions it.
It says IM was added to product type equals townhouse, multi-unit. The two change, they're changing it because of classifying, it looks like a townhouse, different than a multi-unit. So if we're allowing it there, then we've got to allow it over there in the other section, sections eight, one, six, A, purpose. Eight, one, six, C, two, design standards.
Great, Bryce, but Bryce, what do you think, I mean?
We already need to return to make some elements consistent, like I mentioned, section five point one dash one D, the home-based business. We still need to add in IM, because that section did, it, the table of uses changed to allow it, but that section didn't, so there's already elements that we need to go back and, and make consistent, right, so if this is, if this is a sticking point, and something that we need to return to, it might be better suited for that time that we need to go back and do these tiki-tacky kind of things, right, and make, make our zoning more consistent that way.
There may be other things too related to this.
I, I'm sorry, just procedural, I just want to remind the alternates, you're not supposed to be discussing things after the hearings close.
I would ask you questions.
No. No, it's closed.
I re, I, we accused my comments.
So, okay, um I think, um what's the consensus here?
I would say we do it at a later date, you know, just do it as soon as we can and clean it all up. We know what needs to have to be done. On later date.
Later date.
You okay with a later date?
Yeah, we just have to, can we have it added to the agenda for our next meeting to? That's fine. I don't want to go beyond that, because we'll forget about it, and then something will happen, and we get in trouble.
Is that considered not with public hearing now?
No, oh, yeah.
Be a discussion at the next meeting.
Yeah. But you want to change something else anyway, right? So, that's nice.
All right, that seems like consensus frequently, I think you will. Now the motion.
Anybody need one?
You've got, you've got a lot of reading to do. Well, you can have somebody else make some motion.
Okay, so we're ready here. So I'll make a motion uh, to approve zoning regulation, text amendment, application, R, E, G, A, twenty-five days, zero, 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 one to one, amend section five point one, dash eight point G, to allow multi-unit dwellings in the IM zone, subject to conditions. Two, amend section five point one, dash eight point eight, eight point eight, to allow multi-unit dwelling conversions in the IM zone, to conditions and special permit. Three, amend section five point one, dash eight point B, to allow active senior housing in communities in the IM zone, subject to conditions and a special permit, and amending the subsections that are in regarding minimum lot area requirements. And allowing dwelling types to include the IM zone. Four, amend sections four point one, comma, table of permitted uses, comma, to change the following uses in the IM zone. Multi-unit dwelling from prohibited to allowed slash conditional semicolon, multi-unit dwelling uh, conversion from prohibited to special permit slash conditional semicolon, active senior housing from prohibited to special permit slash conditional, semicolon, home-based business from prohibited to allowed slash conditional. Five, amend section eight point one, dash six, to require thirty-foot buffers for active senior housing, multi-unit dwelling and multi-unit dwelling conversion users in the IM zone, when abutting or directly across the local street, from the yearly lot in the IM zone. The town of Grotton Plan and Zoning Commission about zoning regulation text amendment R E G A twenty-five, dash zero, 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 one, pursuant to the following findings and reasons for approval. One, this amendment is consistent with the town's two oh one six plan of conservation development. P O C D. With regards to recommendations specific to analyzing the zoning and allowed uses on currently vacant industrially and commercial. Should be commercially zoned.
Yeah.
Does everybody agree? Anybody have a problem with? Industrially and commercially zoned land revising residential zoning north of I ninety-five. To promote appropriate developer patterns. Two, this amendment is an appropriate response to the general specific housing need. As detailed both of Groton Housing Market Study and the town's Affordable Housing Plan. Three, this zoning text amendment is made in accordance with the comprehensive plan for the town of Groton. And provides for reasonable consideration of environment and water sound in accordance with provisions like CGS eight H two. This text amendment shall be. Become effective June first, twenty twenty-five. Later is second. All those in favor, say aye.
No, just. Discussion.
I'm sorry. New discussion. Here. Cardinal rule, new discussion. Okay. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
And you oppose, abstain? Okay, the motion passes unanimously. Thank you very much. Have a site planned on you? That's great. All right. Now let's have the approval of minutes. Okay. I heard motion to approve the, um, Plan and Zoning Commission minutes of April eight, twenty-five.
Second.
Okay, I have a second. Okay, are there any corrections, revisions, deletions, all the above?
I believe I sat as secretary, but it wasn't listed there.
Sorry?
I, I was supposed to, I was named the secretary for that meeting.
Okay.
That was the only thing that I saw.
Oh. Anybody have anything else?
Did it state that? No, that, that was a. Secretary.
Well, it said vice chair.
Appointed, he appointed Gothier, but he didn't appoint. He appointed Hollis. So.
That was the only thing that I saw, the signature.
Just, yeah, that one sentence, just adding.
Okay. I can't do both.
Well, then you've gotta change the signature part.
Yeah. Okay, other comments, question? Okay, all those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
And you oppose or abstain? Motion carries unanimously. Thank you very much. Okay, at this point, it's amazing. Not doing for the public to come forward. Communicate to the commission. Anything you'd like to, to say at this? If I'm in the audience? Yes.
Yes.
I'm sorry. Don't let that bother. Worth it, welcome.
Good evening, members of the commission. My name's Elizabeth Reese Beck. And I live in eighty-one Main Street in Groton. I'm co-chair and Groton Conservation Advocates. And I wanted to make a couple of comments on Columbia Crossing. And perhaps send in some written comments after I hear the presentation. Uh, we applaud, uh, this big chunk of housing that will come to Groton, which we sorely need. Uh, we also have some real concerns about, uh. The fact that this is such a dense development. That it will pretty much wipe out a beautiful mature forest. That is approximately half of that property. I have thought. That forest, I encourage, won't do the same. It has fifty, seventy-five foot, hundred plus year old oak trees and tulip trees. And a very rare red cedar, small forest within. So I would just, uh. Encourage you to encourage the developer to do whatever they can to save any portion of that forest that they can. Um, ju- just a couple of other comments. I presume, I haven't talked to them yet, that inland wetlands has had multiple conversations about the proximity to our reservoir. And, uh. I see there are seven above ground. Stormwater catchment areas. Which only are as good as they are maintained. I'm no expert in stormwater catchment areas. But I do hope that over time the town. As, uh, so, some office in the town. Uh, reviews those and make sure they are being maintained. Because if they are not, it's possible that the reservoir will become red. Um, but I also wanted to make a comment about the parking lot. There are. Five hundred and twenty-seven parking spaces. That will all be solid as I've seen the plan, solid concrete. As Groton heats up, which it will by the entire planet over the next thirty, forty, fifty years. That place is going to get very, very hot. And, um, I encourage you to encourage the developer to use permeable. Uh, the most up-to-date permeable type of, uh. Of pavement for that area to allow, uh, less sunlight, um, area on it. And which brings me to trees. Um, and looking at the site plan, I see there are some trees sprinkled around. But, um, it didn't look like very many to me. And again, it's a lot of impermeable surface between five buildings and that they barging lot. And they should really try to pack in the trees. And, uh, they should be, we hope, native trees. You came up with a good list. Um, but at this point, they should be native trees of the mid-Atlantic. Because in another ten or twenty years. We are going to have the, um. Probably maybe even less, the climate of Virginia, not New England anymore. Um, so. That's about it. Thank you for opportunities.
Thank you.
Thank you. Anybody else? Oh, you know, you too. Well. Yes, I'll open up to staff and commissioners, um. Right, thank you. Special permits, it's the next topic.
We don't have any or substitutions.
Subdivision? Not this week. Site points. And, um, at this point. Uh, I will recuse myself. So I'd be kind enough to, um, love you. So just time to come back. I appreciate you. Thank you very much.
You are relieved.
Thanks, Al. I'm sure you didn't take this.
Kevin, I think you're up.
Welcome the opportunity. Of the commission.
Presentation on.
I'm back. It's always scary to do two in one night. People get tired of your face. Try to keep it brief. Um, good evening, uh, for the record tonight, again, my name is Bill Sweeney. Uh, I'm a partner and a land use attorney, the law firm at Tobin Harbor in London. And, and thank you for having me here tonight. I appear before you on behalf of my client or partners LLC, which is applied for site plan approval. To allow the construction of Columbia Crossing, a three hundred and ninety-five unit.
Yeah. Oh yeah. You should have it on yours. See on the top, top of your screen. Yep. No, I can't. No.
There, yeah.
Okay, that's weird. Never done it like that before, huh?
So let me start again. I, I appear before you on behalf of my client or partners LLC, which is applied for site plan approval. To allow for the construction of Columbia Crossing. Which is a three hundred and ninety-five unit. Multi-unit, uh, dwelling, uh, development with a clubhouse and other associated amenities. Located at five seventeen, five twenty-nine, five fifty-three and five seventy-one Gold Star Highway here in Groton. This project site is located within your regional commercial district. Where multi-unit dwelling projects are permitted by site plan approval without a public hearing. Subject to specified conditions. This site is also located within your water resource protection district where multiple dwellings are also permitted. Um, again, subject to specified conditions. Uh, joining me tonight, uh, some introductions, uh, are David and Tyler Orr. Uh, they are principals of Orr Partners. Uh, our project engineers tonight, Jeff Fitzgerald and Kevin Cisco from Bohler Engineering. Uh, our project traffic engineer, uh, Mike, which of his name is Ethan Schulskowski. Um, with T P D. And we also have our project architect, Sal Talamo with the Sullivan Architectural Group. Tonight, um, as opposed to what you, in the capacity you sat on the last item. You sit in your administrative capacity tonight as you evaluate this site plan application. And as you're aware, you're required by law to approve an application for site plan approval. If it meets your zoning requirements for the underlying zone and other applicable zoning provisions. This is not a discretionary approval. This is not a public hearing. Uh, and we're, and provided that we demonstrate substantial compliance with your regulations, the, an approval must issued from this commission. I'm gonna provide you some brief background tonight on the application. I'm gonna address zoning compliance specifically. Our engineers are gonna take you through the proposed site plan for the project, the project layout, grading, drainage, utilities, landscaping, outdoor amenity areas. As well as traffic impacts. They're gonna make special note of our compliance with your water resource protection district, uh, regulations. Our project architect, Mr. Talamo, will review floor plans for the proposed residential buildings and clubhouse. As well as exterior building elevations and renderings. Our team will remain available if you have any specific questions, uh, regarding the details of the project. Uh, we have also reviewed the draft motions prepared by Mr. Prescott. Uh, um, and, uh, have no objection to it as it has been prepared. Uh, providing some important background to this application is warranted tonight. And I wanna take a few minutes just to go through sort of the history of this site and how we got to this evening. Uh, the project site that we're gonna show you consists of, of approximately eighteen acres of primarily forested and very rocky land. Spread across four separate parcels located on the southern side of Gold Star Highway, directly across from the signalized intersection with Tulgate Road. The western two parcels are owned by the Town of Groton. They're subject to an option agreement. And the eastern two parcels are owned by PJ and A LLC. A holding company of the Faton family, Joe Faton, one of the, uh, brothers, uh, of that, of that, um, well-known family. Um, uh, is here with us tonight. Uh, uh, the Faton family formerly operated the Chautauq, Chautauqua Plumbing Supply Store, which is on the eastern, uh, which was on the eastern portion of the site. As some of you may recall, if you've been living in Groton for some time. Um, the western town-owned parcels were previously involved in an application for a super Walmart on the site over fifteen years ago. Um, that failed to obtain zoning approvals from the town. Those two parcels were eventually foreclosed upon by the Town of Groton. And they were subsequently designated by town officials for a multifamily development project back in two thousand sixteen. And the town council, um, sponsored an RFP process for the development of those parcels. Um, noting that the town parcels had extremely limited frontage along Gold Star Highway. The town ultimately chose the RFP response of the abutter, PJNA, uh, to purchase those properties. It was recognized very early in the process that only through the merger of these four adjacent lots. Uh, the two town-owned parcels and the two privately owned parcels. Could a critical landmass be assembled to support the development of, of a necessary scale on the site? Uh, the Faton family's proposal was selected and approved by the town council. Um, and that proposal was to engage with an experienced developer partner to obtain approvals for. And construct several hundred units of high-quality market rate housing on the site, which would be fully assembled. Uh, today, despite the passage of time and, and several extensions. PJNA remains the preferred developer of the town under the option agreement to develop the multifamily project at the site. I've had the pleasure of working with Joe and his family and his brothers for a number of years in their efforts, working diligently with their development partners. To design and seek the necessarily, necessary permits for this development. Unfortunately, due to pri- primarily to the exceptional amount of site work that's required for this site and some other engineering challenges. Um, several development partners backed out over the years. And, and particularly, this was particularly, um, um, a significant issue during the COVID nineteen pandemic, which really screwed up a lot of development projects in this area. Fortunately though, last year PJNA entered into a formal agreement with David and, uh, and his company, uh, Orr Partners. To assume the role of development partner on the project. And I was actually asked to represent both parties going forward in this proceeding. I'm very happy to be here tonight because this is literally a decade in the making. Uh, we find ourselves at one of the final steps necessary to achieve the vision laid out for this site by the town council all the way back in two thousand sixteen. With Orr Partners on board and partnered with PJNA, we're finally ready to make the vision of that site a reality. Orr Partners is well-equipped to succeed. Uh, they are a leading national real estate development owners rep and construction management firm. Uh, the company was founded back in nineteen eighty-eight. They're headquartered in Northern Virginia. Uh, and they have a proven track record of managing projects and delivering quality results. Uh, the company's expertise covers a wide range of areas from site selection, design, permitting, zoning compliance, financial analysis. Getting construction financing, overseeing construction and managing, uh, dozens of properties. Today, in fact, Orr Partners has developed approximately five thousand units of multifamily housing. Throughout the eastern United States and as, as well as on the west coast now, uh, in addition. Most importantly though, Orr Partners is no stranger to Groton. It has an existing office here in, in town. It's been providing project management services to Electric Boat for nearly two decades. And, uh, more recently, um, it has, uh, been the owner's rep, is provided owner representation services on the Trenton Square development here in Groton as well. Uh, the Columbia Crossing development that we're just gonna share with you tonight is really a natural expansion of the company's existing portfolio. As building high-quality multifamily units in Groton will directly serve the growing. A workforce associated with the expansion of EB's nuclear submarine program. Uh, Orr Partners was reviewed and approved last year as a, as the bona fide developer partner by the town council. And if site plan approval is granted tonight by this commission, it hopes to close on the properties later this year with the town and break ground on the project shortly thereafter. The site plan we're gonna present to you tonight depicts a development plan that was already conceptually approved by the town council. It consists of five, five-story buildings encompassing three hundred and ninety-five multi-unit dwellings. It consists of five five-story buildings encompassing three hundred and ninety-five multi-unit dwellings. With a clubhouse building, paved parking areas, landscaping, stormwater management components, utilities and amenity spaces. As desired by the town as part of the RFP process, you'll also see the main entrance for the project. Will be at the Tollgate Road signalized intersection. A design which is very expensive due to the rock removal that's required to do that. But it's going to ensure safe traffic flow in and out of the site. Our project engineers, you'll hear from Jeff Fitzgerald tonight, have also taken great care to design a stormwater management system. To make sure that the water supply watershed in, surrounding the site is protected. Our plan meets or exceeds the requirements of your zoning regulations as they apply to the regional commercial district. It demonstrates compliance with the site plan objectives of section nine point five dash four. The conditions for multi-unit dwellings contained in section five point one dash eight point G. And obviously the conditions of development within the water resource protection district. In the interest of time, and rather than reviewing each of those components with you, I would point out in your staff package. That was provided by Dave, there is narrative that we've provided, he's also provided a very comprehensive staff report. Showing our compliance with each of those items. I would obviously be happy to, to address or go over any of those specific compliance issues with you later tonight if necessary. But at this time, what I'd like to do is hand the presentation over to Jeff Fitzgerald from Bowler. Who's going to present the site plan for the project and get you acquainted with this, thank you.
Good evening, I'm Jeff Fitzgerald, I'm a professional engineer and planner with Bowler. Our office in Connecticut is in West Hartford Center. Give you a little orientation on the site, Bill gave us a pretty good introduction, if you go back one day there. Just, as, as Bill said, it's opposite the intersection of Tollgate Hill Road. A portion of that site is previously developed, you can see that in the middle. And it comprises of those, those four parcels there. To the west, the butters are the Gold Star Office Park. To the east, you can see the Gold Star Inn. And to the south is the Avalonia Nature Preserve, which is. An important resource and, and as Bill said, we're in the. We're in the water, water protection district, so. Because of that, there's limitations to how, how much infiltration you can do, things like. Horse pavement, trace invasion, infiltration basins are not, not permitted in there, so. We do, and I'll get into the stormwater design in a bit, but ultimately we manage the stormwater. Through a series of basins, bio-basins and detention, both underground and underground in order to. Reduce the peak flows off the site. In all the storms, in all the design points, so. You go to the, the next, next page, I do want to point out that there's no existing wet ones on the parcels. And it's not located in a FEMA floodplain. You know, the front of the site drains towards Gold Star Highway. West portion, a small portion drains west, east drains. Towards the east and the lands behind the inn, and then the south drains south, so it really is a. Existing condition is, is really a dome, kind of a bit of a dome and. Part of the earthwork here in order to create a more pedestrian-oriented facility that's not steep and dangerous for cars in the winter. Is kind of taking off a bit of the top, that middle leveling it out, there's still a fair amount of topography on the site, so. Drain well, and we can manage that somewhat really pretty easily, but. But as Bill said, we end up with, we're proposing five, five-story buildings, a total of three hundred and ninety-five units. We've got five hundred and twenty-seven surface parking spaces proposed, which is above the minimum and below the maximum. Allowed in this zone for this use, and we include the required number of ADA spaces as well as. Some EV charging spaces and preparations for even more future EV charging spaces. As we mentioned, big difference between this application and some of the previous is that we are proposing. To have the access drive located to be a new fourth leg of the signalized intersectional and Tollgate. Road, so that involves a big rock cut and, and the largest bit of earthwork in the front. And we also provide, if you look down on the, on the southern side, an emergency access and egress drive at that point. Just in the, the instance that there would be an incident on the main driveway, we, we never have a closed-off access. So, you know, we, as part of design, we have good circulation around all the buildings. Good pedestrian circulation throughout the facility. We have a clubhouse at the northern end that you'll see a bit more detail provided by. Sal on the architecture, very attractive clubhouse, features a pool, some pickleball courts and other amenities down at that end. Again, connectivity that you see throughout sidewalks, there's a lot of amenities interspaced throughout. And pedestrian scale lighting as well as lighting for the parking areas at two different heights. In order to create a very safe place, yet all the light fixtures are dark sky compliant. And full cutoff fixtures. As I said, the pedestrian scale lights are mounted at ten feet high and then around the perimeter where the parking lots, those are. At eighteen foot mounting height to have a nice even spread and no spillage off-site. Let's go, let's see, we're. From a grading and we'll, we'll talk traffic here. Our traffic engineer Ethan Schukowski is here if you have additional questions. But I do want to just mention the key things right here as part of my overview, and that is, is that. During the analysis, the, the no build is presented on the left and the existing movements are shown. And all the movements that are existing in the, in the no build condition are. As, Bs, and Cs. And in the build condition. We maintain the exact same level of service in the existing movements, which are out of Gold Star Highway. And I'm, and, and out of Tollgate. In addition, we add the north con movements, which you see in the, in the band there are. Basically Bs and Cs, so the trip generation too for the site that if you look down the bottom. Chart, the most busiest time when the site will be adding cars from the site onto Gold Star Highway. Is the weekday morning peak hour and. The total exiting the site at that time is a hundred and twenty-five cars. Per the hour on average, so if you take that. Number of cars and divide it over the hour, it's a little more than two cars per minute leaving the site, so. No real, no impact negative to the, to the traffic situation. And again, this is a state highway, so we're going through the process of, through the state office of traffic administration to get that approval. Next slide. Okay, talking about the, the grading and drainage here. As, as I mentioned earlier, it's a fairly significant elevation change getting into the site. The, the site is on average thirty, forty feet higher than Gold Star Highway. So it's a little bit of sophisticated drainage design. The driveway enters and climbs up, and then we have the full circulation around the site. We have maintained the existing drainage patterns, so you can see. Everywhere there's a design point, design point one, design point two to the north, design point three to the west. And then design point four to the southwest, design point five to the due, due south. And six to the southeast, those have all been evaluated, we maintain the flows to those point. To those places so that, you know, we're not creating any dryout situation, but we're not increasing any of the peak flows to them by the development. And that, that is being managed through seven above-ground detention basins and. And those are shown in the basins around there, we have actually. Two underground systems, the green cul-de-sac chambers, which are again placed on the north side. We do need to carefully maintain and, and control the flows of stormwater that goes out to the state system. In, in Gold Star Highway. So those are provided in order to be able to have very precise metering of the water leaving throughout the control structures. Every basin and underground chamber set is, has a. Contact cascade hydrodynamic separator treating the water before it goes in. In addition, in the rear, you can see the two teal basins, so those are biofiltration basins. They're fairly sophisticated, design meets the new DEP Storm Water Quality Manual where you have. Basically a filtration media that's planted that the water enters that basin. Goes through this filtration media and has nutrient take-up through the plantings. And then has an underdrain through that media that takes it into the next basin. Which is where the volume is controlled and the storm and the flow rates are controlled as it's metered out, so. It is a very well-designed, I'm very proud of this design. My Kevin Cisco is over my shoulder running this, is the designer of this, and we, we're very proud of this. It, like I said, it meets the goals of the Water Resource Protection District. Because every one of those basins are lined at the bottom, so it's not direct infiltration and it's got, it's meant to, to be. Treated and, and outletted at those basins kind of mimicking the existing hydrology out there. Like I said, the water quality is met through, in addition to what I described, deep-sunk catch basins with hooded outlets. The hydrodynamic separator units that I said on there, vegetated swales used to, to transport. Sort runoff to the basins and, and from the outlets. And those bio-retain retention basins that I discussed indeed. Let's see. Talk about the cut and fills, next slide. This just, this image shows you the red is the areas of cut on the site. The dark red is the more significant cuts, which is at the entrance and at the, kind of the middle of the site. The green is filled, the darker the green, the more the, the deeper the fill, so this is. This just shows how the site was a bit cut and filled in order to. Create a more level playing field for the, for this development and allows it to be more family-friendly, more. Pedestrian-friendly, allows it to not have, like I said, very steep grades that. Other developers may have, may have preferred because it would deal, involve less earthwork and less earthwork cost. Cut could be, next slide. So landscaping is fairly elaborate here, both within the parking areas. You see a fair amount of shade trees at the perimeter of the parking as well as in the islands in the middle. There's a lot of planting and. And landscape around all the bio-basins and the surface retention basins. The, there is a screening buffer on the southeastern border to the residentially zoned property. So that's a, you know, important buffer that we beat up there for a few to meet the, the code in that area. And you can see along the office, Gold Star Office on the left, there's an additional plantings in that buffer. Where the ponds are on the other side, so. Next slide gets into, all the, all the plans are mostly native to, so we'll get into this here. This is a landscape plan showing a couple of things as the, basically the amenities. Between, on the right-hand side, between the apartment buildings where you have outdoor grills, places for people to. Get together and eat outside, there's bike racks, there's fire pits, some. Basically string lights above, above to, for my keeping it lit at night. Bike racks are included in there and on the clubhouse side. You see similar, a bit more elaborate with pickleball courts, a more outdoor seating. Ability for outdoor dining, corn holes and that, that sort of thing, as well as the pool area. And, and that's all fenced in, important to see on the bottom left, there is. Request to have some of the stone, the field stone walls that are in the property that are being disturbed, have those reconstructed. So there's some details for stone retaining walls on the bottom right there that. Show the less than eighteen inches and above eighteen inches to be able to reuse some of those stone. That field stone into new walls that'll become part of the landscape used on the site. And. That's an overall view really of, of the plan and we'll. And we'll hand it over to, in summary, you know, this. Application is for permitted multifamily residential use. And we've met the goals of the town and the, the site plan here is in accordance with. All town regulations that are applicable to the site. It brings multifamily residential into this commercial zone. As you'll see in Sal's plans, very attractive set of buildings and I think the site plan layout is attractive. And it's going to be a very comfortable place for people to, to live and work out of. And if I didn't emphasize it enough, our stormwater program reduces all flows, all peak flows off the site. And treats water quality and is in compliance with the requirements of the Water Resource Protection District. Thank you.
Good evening, my name's Sal Talamo, I'm the architect on the project, I'm with the Sullivan Architectural Group. Some of the stuff I may talk about will be a little bit repeated. But there's, there's five five-story buildings arranged on the site and, you know, the configurations of the site. Of the buildings on the site was important to us. And it was important to not only about vehicle circulation, pedestrian circulation, all of which was what we talked about. Was also vantage points, you know, you know, there's, there's no one, one area of the site that, that someone may feel. You know, they got stuck in a corner, so we really thought through the entire site. Which will engage everyone to utilize the site and, and, and which, which creates all these different moments. So, so there's essentially, there's no front and back of the buildings, both, all the buildings essentially. Um, so, so there's essentially, there's no front and back of the buildings, both the, all the buildings essentially have a, a front. Um, and and there, there, which is. Um, what, which allows for uh the vantage points of, of walking around the outside as well as this, uh, the inside, we specifically. Uh, aligned the clubhouse island where it's, where it's located in the center of the access to, to engage all that activity. See people moving around, um, as well as when you drive into the site, you know, you know, you got that, 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 that nice feature there. The, if you can go to the next plan, well, as, as, as the site, a- as you pull into the site, the cycle gradually slopes. Uh, so, so it's, so if, if the, if the lower end is, is on the, the left side here, if you go to the next plan. The building split, so the lower end is on the right. Um, so, so buildings one and two have a lower portion which offer a lower level. Uh, which we, we have a hundred individual storage bays, um. That, that provide, um, that provide, that uh, in each, in each building's one and two, so it's a total of two hundred bays for the three hundred ninety-five units. Uh, which, which provides fifty percent of the dwelling units, at least a hundred cubic feet of in- individual long term parking. Uh, and, and, and we did this for, um. Um, access of, of, you know, bikes and kayaks and so forth. Uh, in, in addition to the large closet spaces we have within the units, uh, for, for their own private storage. If you go to the next plan, which is the first floor plan, which is typical on, on all the buildings. Uh, there, there are a total of seventy-nine uh units in each, each building. Uh, sixty of them have upper floor balconies or ground level patios providing three hundred units. Uh, of the three hundred and ninety-five units with outdoor private space. Uh, the typical area of each of those balconies is approximately seventy square feet. Uh, and every dwelling unit has, uh, uh, it has a, a closet with a stackable washer and dryer. Uh, so, so there's, and then we also provide different levels of, of those um balcony spaces, whether it's. There, we, they're internal as, as well as external on the corners, you know, bringing up the, the, the activity on the building. With, uh, i- if you go to, um, if you go to the, the. So, so, so essentially, when you, when you enter the building, you enter in, in this, in the, uh, in the center on both sides, it has a double loaded corridor. Which get into stairwells and each hand, uh, if you go to the, the roof plan. The, the, the geometry of the, the geometry of the roof. Uh, allows for us to put all the, the mechanical equipment, uh, with contained in the roof. Uh, where, where it can't be seen again for, uh, 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 well, allowing us to further utilize the site, uh, not, not having to, to house it. If you go to the, the next slide, which should be the, the perspectives. Now, the exterior of the building has tradition, uh, uh, traditional massing with um, re- uh, primary. Double gabled fe- and features on both the front and the back. Well, with uh, a double gabled and on each side to break up the five story facade horizontally. The building is vertically broken up with a variety of materials that include stone veneer base with trim bands. Uh, at each of the double gabled ends, on the front and back with clapboard at the body and board and baton at the upper floors to cap the building. The building also has decorative shed roofs with brackets to aid in breaking down the scale, and those are those uh features uh of, of M D Ns. Uh, the color scheme is a two-tone contemporary look, uh, where the body of the building uh has a light gray clapboard. Uh, where the gable ends has a dark gray clapboard with white board and back. The front rear buildings have recessed covered entrances with large trim bands and columns. The, the building also includes recessed balconies with railings at the main, um, at the main body and at the corners of, um, as I mentioned before. The aesthetic is meant to satisfy both the modern look. Via the contrasting color scheme while achieving a timeless look with disproportionate massing, all of which complying. With the requirements stated in the zoning regulations. Uh, if you go to the clubhouse perspective, uh, the aesthetic of the clo- clubhouse is an extension of the typical residential building. With a similar, similar traditional massing features and contemporary color scheme. Uh, the, 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 the image on the, the, the upper left is the front, uh, as you pull in, that's. And the image on the lower right is, is, is facing the central uh aisle of the, of, of the project. Where you have all the activity of, of the pool, um, on one side and the pickleball court on the other. Uh, the, the, the clubhouse amenities include a co- cowork business area, fitness. And lounge areas and out, outdoor pickleball and, and um. Full areas I just mentioned, as well as uh bike racks and, and grilling stations. And that's all, that's all I have.
A few more comments and then we can open it up for questions, but I, I just, I want to thank you for your time and attention this evening, um, just a few. Comments to add on to the um presentation you heard. Um, again, this is in the Water Resource Protection District, the Water Resource Protection District does not allow infiltration. Uh, and so what if instead our design as dictated by the Water Resource Protection District Regulations. Is surface detention and the, and we are using underground chambers not to infiltrate, but to control peak flows. Uh, we also, if you look at our application materials, uh, we are meeting all the other requirements of the Water Resource Protection District. Um, there is no hazardous material used for storage proposed, there's no discharge of any contaminated wastewater. This project is fully served by public water and sewer, in fact, um, the, uh, the sewer department conducted, uh, the D P W department conducted. Uh, a comprehensive demand study to make sure that there was sufficient capacity and that was confirmed as well, uh, for this project. Uh, further, we've committed in our application materials, uh, that no sodium chloride is going to be used on any impervious surfaces, so there's no concern about salt. Be, um, being leached into, um, uh, off the site. Uh, and then no, there's no stockpiling or dis- disposal of snow containing storage, sodium chloride or other similar. Um, chemicals uh associated with snow removal on this site. Uh, I would also say that separate and apart from the planning and zoning process, uh, we are working with rotten, uh, rotten utilities. We will be entering in, into what's called a memorandum of understanding with them, um, that will govern our construction process, our stormwater. Controls and erosion controls and most importantly, post-construction monitoring of our stormwater runoff. Will be actually obligated to do periodic testing of our stormwater to show that we're meeting the standards. Um, for, uh, for the quality of those stormwater coming off of our site, so I hope that addresses maybe any concerns we have. Not just during construction, but long term on the project as well. Um, I just also want to, if we can go back to the site plan and, and I'm gonna ask Kevin. Um, Cisco, you know, one other thing that, um, we didn't mention that I think is really important. Is if you could point out the trail connection to the Avalonia. So we did meet with Avalonia, uh, Avalonia has uh Antonino Reserve to the south of the property. Um, they have extensive trail system, um, that literally comes right up to the property line. Uh, we are created a physical connection from our project to that trail system. Uh, we've met with Avalonia, had a really positive uh conversation with them, uh, addressed all of their concerns and, and got there basically their blessing. I think that's why Sue, uh, recused herself, uh, tonight, but we, we really worked closely with Avalonia, so this will create an opportunity for residents of this project. To actually go and use those trails, which was something that was very important to the staff in our early meetings. As I, as I mentioned again, uh, earlier tonight, uh, again, you sit in your administrative capacity tonight. And as I said before as well, you're required to approve the project if we meet the requirements of your zoning regulations. Uh, what we gave you was a very broad sort of ten thousand foot overview of the project, there's a lot of detail. Uh, that we've been going over with, over the last two months, um, with, with Dave a- and the other planners in, in the uh Office of Planning Development. You, we have addressed all pertinent comments from all city departments and agencies, we've addressed all the comments from your planners. Uh, there is draft motion that has been prepared for you tonight. Uh, and I think between our application materials, our resubmission of revised plans and the testimony you heard tonight. Um, we've demonstrated substantial compliance with your zoning regulations. Uh, consequently, we believe that this project is ready for approval tonight with reasonable, uh, stipulations. Uh, and most importantly though, and I think this is something that's worth repeating. This is a project that has been a long-term economic development priority for the town of Groton, literally for a decade. Uh, it's something, um, that I know that staff, both present and past in the Department. Of uh Planning Development have really put a lot of time and effort into, and I've been working with them for the better part of that period, trying to get this project off the ground. There have been numerous starts and there've been stops, there've been challenges and frustrations, there've been developer partners that have come and gone. Uh, but this, I think this project is really a shiny example of perseverance and the potential value of public-private partnerships. We have private developers working hand in hand with the town of Groton to bring housing online to meet this region's housing needs. Uh, both of my clients, both, uh, Tony's family and or partners. Um, they deeply appreciate the support the town has given us through this process and the shared commitment of seeing this thing to the end. Um, and over the last decade, uh, all of these efforts really come to this point tonight. And with the steady hand and the experience of work partners, as well as hopefully your final approval. We can finally make the vision of a high-quality market rate, uh, apartment complex on this site a reality. Uh, and we can do that, um, at a time when this community and this region desperately needs this type of housing. So with that, I certainly open up, um, you know, the, the, the floor for any questions from the commission. Uh, we have full plan sets of both the architecturals and the, um, uh, the engineered site plans. So if you have specific questions about anything, we can go over them, uh, with you. Uh, and we're, we're available to have a discussion about any element of the project you wish, but thank you for your time today.
Alright, alright, thank you. Um, so yeah, there's a, there's a few things that, um, I want to kind of reiterate as part of the discussion that you heard from the applicant. Um, and there's a couple of the things that we'll probably, might want to come back to, to discuss, so, um. One of the things is phasing, because we want to get into that piece of it, but again, um, so. As part of this project, have you, as you've seen, there's actually four parcels, two of them are town owned and two of them are private. Um, uh, as, as part of any approval, all four lots of those, uh, all four lots will be combined in a revised deed, uh, recorded in land records. Um, the multi-unit residential, uh, is a permanent use in the C R zone, as was discussed, um, and as was. Uh, discussed a lot, this is in the Water Resource Protection District, so we looked a lot at that as well as Groton Utilities and had several con- some conversations. And I know the applicant did too as well, um, in terms of dealing with the Water Resource Protection District issues. Um, the applicant is proposing to, to keep twenty-one percent natural to meet the W R P D requirements. That is a requirement to keep at least twenty percent, they're proposing to keep twenty-one percent. And again, there are seven proposed above-ground uh detention basins along with two underground, um, with no, uh, no increase in peak flow. Um, one thing that wasn't mentioned, I know, um, I think the architect mentioned it about the, the, the roof having, uh, the mechanicals on there. As another requirement through the W R P D, um, there's a requirement that none of the hazard materials that are associated with rooftop mechanicals. Are allowed to get in there, so there will actually be hazard material containment as part of those, um, before discharging into the rooftop system. Um, and I think Attorney Sweeney was also mentioning that while. While this is not a zoning requirement, they've been working with Groton Utilities specifically on an M O U. And I think one of the big, big pieces of that M O U is, is really looking at that post-construction, the maintenance of the, of these detention basins. To make sure that they're functioning within the W R P D. Um, terms of utilities, we talked a little bit, public water, public sewer, um, the applicant actually funded a third-party review by Fussin O'Neil. Um, to conduct the sewer capacity, um, that study confirmed that there was adequate, adequate sewer capacity. Um, there are a s- a, a number of, of, uh, you may see in this in-site plan, a number of, um, generators on site. Um, those will be fueled by propane tanks, um, those, that was actually a revision. I don't think the revisions showed the screening, so as part of, if approved, as part of the technical items, we'll work with the applicant to make sure those are screened properly. Um, traffic, um, as was mentioned, uh, there will be now a, a new four-way, a two-way full-access signalized intersection. At the intersection of Gold Star Highway and Tollgate, and they have been working to, uh, the applicant's been working directly with D O T. As well as the Office of State Traffic Administration. Um, I want to bring up one other thing, because it was talked about very briefly on the, on the, um, I know this is flipped, so it's not exactly, so. What you're looking at on the screen right now in the lower left-hand corner, you see that actual other access drive right there. Um, that is actually something that the fire ma- marshal asked for, so that will be, um, a secondary, um, egress point. It's going to be a gated egress point, so it's only used for emergencies and they've been working directly with the fire marshal of how that'll be locked and gated. Um, obviously there'll be new sidewalks, um, along Gold Star Highway frontage. Um, and you know, the site really does provide the, the complete pedestrian access all around the entire site. As well as connecting to the, um, on the, looking at the, the screen there on the lower right-hand side. Um, that access point directly to, um, the Leo Antonino Preserve, which is owned by Avalonia. Um, initially, the, the site was in the northern part, so the, the, the upper, uh, upper right side. Um, and it, after us going out and visiting the site, it made a lot more sense to move it down a lot less impact. And there were direct connections there, um, to the, to the, the Avalonia, and, and obviously as was stated. The applicants was, has been working directly with, with Avalonia on that. Um, so, one of the things that was not discussed, and if you have more questions about the phasing piece of this, um. I'll think, you know, definitely the applicant, the engineer and whatnot can talk about the, the phasing piece, so, um. The pro- this project is planned to be phased, um, as part of the documents that were part of, um. The, the, uh, the agenda packet, the phasing, uh, packet was in there, so, um. So, what's happening right now is, and me, Kevin, can you pull that up actually? Alright, so at least this way we can kind of, and you, maybe you guys, after I finish, you guys can talk to it through. Okay, okay, yep, so I'll just, I'll just talk very briefly about, so it's basically going to be five phases. Um, phase one, um, will be, will basically. In- include the entire site to be rough graded, to put in the stormwater system, as well as, um. You know, getting the six foundations in there, um, as, I think that's still the plan. Um, as well as the completion of the clubhouse and building one, now. With the clearing of the site, there was concern about leaving that entire site cleared, so. What they're proposing is that as soon as those foundations are built, that they will go back and put temporary E N S over the entire site and receive the whole site. From the phasing perspective, then it will work on, in a clockwise, um, motion and go from, again, from clubhouse. Um, and building one and then work its way around, um, building by building, um, opening those up. Um, and again, you guys correct me if I said that wrong. Oh, that's fine, that's fine. Obviously, as was, was shown with the, um, the cut and fill sheet, that there, there, there's a lot of, there's a lot of rock out there, so. Um, it was confirmed that they will have to do some blasting and crushing, um, that is not part of this proposal, so that will be, have to be a set, come in as a temporary. Um, administrative site plan, um, afterwards, but obviously prior to any construction. Another piece that was talked about a little bit, but I want to talk a little bit more about is the landscaping piece, so on the. On the eastern side of the property, um, that is zoned residential on that other side, it's actually Groton Utilities land. So it's part of the preserve watershed to help protect the, the wetlands, so. I guess they could develop it at some point, but at this point, even though it's zoned residential, it's completely natural. But based upon our regulations, we require twenty-five foot buffer. So what the applicant has, has proposed is basically a twenty-five foot evergreen, um, uh, buffer. On that side adjacent to, um, uh, the rotten utilities land, and then on the western side, um. There's a fifteen foot buffer, um, there, but obviously, um. As was discussed before in the I M thing about buffers, um, the, it's ultimately the decision of planning and zoning commission if that's, if that's something that. Um, which option is, obviously they are, at this point, looking at design standard number one, which is the buffers, the, the, again, the twenty-five foot on the eastern side. And the fifteen foot on the western side. Um, another thing that wasn't, we didn't really talk much about this, we, we did show the landscaping, but what wasn't shown is actually the landscaping around the buildings. Because there's actually significant landscaping around the buildings because of our regulations, and I also, that was also one of the, um. One of the documents that was part of the agenda packet too, that if you saw that, so. Um, because there is more than a hundred parking spaces there, we have a requirement in terms of pedestrian safety. Um, to, uh, to require in the front of the buildings, a twenty-foot wide landscaping strip in addition to the six-foot wide sidewalks. So basically twenty-six, six feet off of, of the buildings, the frontage of the buildings is, um, is, is basically. Either sidewalk, six feet of sidewalk, eh, or twenty feet of landscaping, and if you look at that sheet, I don't know if you guys have that sheet, I know I'm going all over the place, but. Um, there is significant landscaping around the frontage of all of those buildings. Uh let's see, oh, in addition, this was mentioned by the engineer, um but I want to bring this up again. Um there is, um one of the things that we did see, not only walking the site, but also aside of the site plans. Is there's, there's a lot of um stone walls there. And they have a lot of history and, and, and initially, um the applicant was just looking at, at building the stone wall. Ca- connecting to Avalonia. But when that was brought back up, they basically, as, as was mentioned, they're actually, they're, they're, they're small retaining walls by the inside amenities by all the buildings. Are actually going to be u- reusing that, 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 that fieldstone, so we're happy with that, that piece too. Um one more thing, and then I'll probably turn it back to you guys, phasing or whatever you guys have questions. Um in terms of multi-unit residential design, um this project meets the building and site requirements of section five-point-one dash eight point G. For, for storage, private outdoor space, building form setbacks and screen, solid waste facilities. We didn't talk about this, but in the um, in the upper-left-hand side, there's actually, and maybe Kevin, you can point to it. There is that, that is actually where the, uh keep moving to the, oh, yeah, good. The bu- yeah, just build to the, to the, to the, the um solid waste and recycling. Yeah, there it is right there. So that building is actually right over there. Um so you know, that's going to be screened and everything like that. Um and additionally, uh there are significant recreational amenities in, including the clubhouse, which has a fitness and lounge area. Outdoor pool, pickleball courts, bike storage, and obviously the aforementioned um trail connection to the Avalonia property. I know this is, my staff report had a bunch of other stuff too as well, um but I'd be happy to take any of the questions you have on that. Thank you.
May I have Kevin Cisco come up and just go through the base plan that was described to you visually, so you can see it?
Uh hi Kevin Cisco, design engineer with Bowler. So essentially, we had worked with the pre-construction team uh phasing plan for this development. So our limit of work within this project is roughly fifteen acres. And working through how it's going to be phased, uh we've broken it up into several phases. Essentially, the first phase of this development is uh setting your clearing limits. That has been marked out by that blue line there on the screen. And rough grading the site, as well as uh working on installing all the utilities around the site. And essentially getting the site ready for construction of buildings. Uh so as you can see, at this point, the entire site would be under construction. Setting rough grades and then stabilizing areas that are to be developed um further down the road in the phasing plan. Uh so if you move on to the next phase. Yes, the next piece here there. So essentially, we started to eat away at. Essentially, we're going to eat away at the um site chunk by chunk in a manner that works both for the construction team as well as residents that would be. Uh at this point, living in the community. Uh so as you can see, the, the red hatch remains what's under construction throughout phase two. And what's uh no longer hatched is what would, we were considering to be open and operating at that point. Uh there's several blue arrows pointing into residential traffic. And with the uh red arrows indicating construction entrances for the uh construction team. And they're providing a temporary pavement area to provide full circulation to, just to the right of building one. Uh which is delineated by that gray hatch, probably can't see too well, but there's a temporary pavement in that location. During phase two, that allows uh full access for the residents around the perimeter of building one. And then at this point, clubhouse and building one's open. And then, as you can see, as we move into the next phase is phase three. We're essentially starting to move in a clockwise fashion, which helps the construction team uh maintain. Safe and feasible routes for the residents, and then uh they can still keep working on the actual erection of the buildings and opening them up. So as you can see, phase three is building one, two and clubhouse. As you move on, uh the next phase would then be the furthest building, which I believe is building five. And then slowly working your way down the next phase, you open up the next building in, in line and then.
You show a two-month period of performance? You can put that big building up in two months?
Uh. So this is prepared by the contractors and they put approximate um dates on each phase. Phase one, which is the, pretty much is where the bulk of the instruction is, that's about a, they have that to a sixteen, twenty-one month phase, I believe. So that'll have all the pads for all the buildings rough graded, all your utilities will be in, so the phase you see.
Or, or five.
Yeah, it just works best with logistics for um the site contractors. So each phase after this one is just the uh erection of the building and then tying the utilities together and the interiors.
Yeah, I'm just going to say, just for like the flow of how like construction works. If you kind of wreck them all, it's like generally same time you move around the site, but you'll wreck it all. And then you'll be coming back through and mainly like working inside the project. So you're doing the finishes, that putting cabinets, electrical plumbing, that sort of thing, that you work all the way around.
Yeah, so sixteen, um sixteen months for the first?
Correct.
And then two, two. Yeah. Yeah, I just wanted to see what the, you know.
While we were still finishing out the rest of the buildings, working with Deb and Dave. They said, listen, the way Grotton, or in some communities don't do this, but Grotton has very strict rules about this. So we put together the basing plan to allow for the wool out of the project, which is also important for absorption of the units into the market.
Yep.
So Kevin, you um, you just show the, the landscape thing that shows the buffers. So can we talk a little bit about the buffers on the east and west side? Can you show that so we can put it out? And then, uh because I said before in the last hearing, I said there are times when there are the, the buffer requirements. Um require buffers to vary innocuous uses. So here's a great example that, you know, on the eastern edge of the site, we're required to provide. To, to know, but we're required to put a buffer basically to preserve Grotton Utilities land. Even though it's zoned residential, because that's the way it reads. So I think it cuts both ways, but we have met the requirement of, of the buffer. You know, the, the letter of the law, so to speak, on that. And if you can page down, that's the buffer on the east side on, on the Grotton Utility Land. And then to the office park uh next door. We have the landscaping there. If you've been out to the site today, um you'll know it's, it's some, I think Jeff did a really nice job describing sort of the dome. This is a dome of rock, sort of this site. And right now, drainage comes off that rock and just spills out onto the parking lot of the next-door neighbor. After this project's done, we'll actually have detention basins there and capture the, the flow. So we're going to actually make the existing condition even better, quite frankly, as a result of this project. Could you offer up the sheet that shows the landscaping around buildings that Dave talked about too? The first interior is just the landscaping plan for around the actual amenity spaces on the clubhouse. You can see the amount of plantings and landscape material that we're putting in, again, all native species. Um that we're putting in, in a real mix of deciduous and evergreen plantings. Um that'll really make this soften up a lot of the hardscape areas and create natural screens and it just really beautify the property. And, and that same type of design is replicated across the site uh around our buildings. We have these landscape plans, you know, in our, along, here's another example here. Um and we obviously work closely um with staff on these designs, really to soften up the buildings and, and provide a really attractive project. Uh this is a project, ideally, that should be a showcase project. It's a town-sponsored development. Uh it's something that we really want to point to as sort of an example of good multifamily development. Um and put a lot of time and effort, I know the entire team has, trying to provide a product that's going to distinguish itself in the marketplace. I think that addresses the, the comments that Dave said, but I, we're happy to discuss any other questions or issues and any other issues that you may have. Thank you.
Let's start down at your end.
How can I propose something? Can we just take like a five-minute break? We're still on east, east African zone timeframes. And it's not going down here. Okay, thank you.
Take a five-minute break?
I'll take care of things while you're gone.
How much? They'll never, they never say.
We're a hundred and fifty people in the room.
But they, then there's something in the motion about, isn't there about consolidating?
Rectifying the.
No, I think before you, you get it, they have to. No, they have to go into let, um, the land records and combine them. So they have one, one continuous lot. The four, yeah, it says, uh. It, yes, item two, it says the lot shall be combined and revised deed recorded prior to filing the site plan.
So at some point.
Inland. They'll have to have them all.
No, but they bought.
Oh, no, they have to, well, they have to either buy them or have the authorization before they can submit the site plan. No, that's, that's where it comes.
That's what I'm asking.
No, they don't have to have purchased it, but they have to have authorization from the owner to support this.
And if the owner is the town.
That's, no, then the town would have to. I mean, how they sell property? I don't know, but if they don't, no, before you can put a site plan. I assume the staff checks that, wow, before you can do that, you have to either own the property. Or have a written statement from the owner that they can submit this. That's before you can.
That's a good question for staff.
No, well, they should be able to tell you then.
When we come back.
Don't ask. But they don't necessarily, they don't necessarily have to have the deed. But they have to have approvals. That's a requirement from the site.
Much better.
Just wash my face. I know.
We all good? We're, we're back.
We're ready, five minutes ahead of time.
We're ready, so.
Might as well go.
And you can start.
We're back to work.
So for staff? There's one property owner for all four parcels?
No, right now, two are town-owned.
Okay.
And two are privately owned.
Okay.
So as part of, and then if you saw, like, I put in the draft motion that if this got to, got approved. That prior to, as part of the, of, of filing the, all the plans and everything, they would have to have purchased the other two properties. And then combined all of them as part of a deed that would be submitted to as part of land records prior to that. That's the only way it could happen.
So we would be, the commission would be administratively approving a site plan for properties that the applicant doesn't own.
Yes, yeah.
We have a contractual, we have a contractual agreement with the town to buy them. So it's just like as if the developer came to you, said, I have a contract to buy this property, subject to zoning approvals. It's no different, just our, our, our contract is with the town Grotton.
What year did the RTM approve the sale of these town-owned properties? Do we have that on record?
I don't remember. I have to look it back up.
The original RFP was issued in two thousand sixteen. I want to say that by two thousand eighteen, we had the initial uh option agreement and the option agreement. Um references the approvals that were granted by the town to authorize the conveyance of the properties. Um you'd have to talk to Eric Callahan about that, I think. He handled those, those details a little bit before my time.
Five. That's all I have, thank you.
Let's just talk to, to Clint. Yeah, Clint, you have anything? Clint, you with us?
Took a permanent break. Is he still on the?
I'm looking right now. He should be. Oh, no, he's not.
No, he's, oh, yeah.
He left us.
All right, mention of that. Isn't he supposed to announce that when he leaves?
Yes.
Yes.
Yeah, he might have got to, yeah. I don't see anything in chat either, so.
Okay.
Yes, I had a couple of questions. Um but one, Roy. So Bill, when you said, um, and I, I just want to make sure my words were correct.
Sure.
This was conceptually approved by the town council.
Yeah.
Were those your words?
It was.
What does that mean?
So in certain, in a lot of the development agreements for town-owned properties, and you'll, there's a lot of town properties that are going through this process, you're going to see this. Uh one of the standard terms of that is that before you come to the Planning and Zoning Commission, the town council gets to review what's called the concept site plan. It has no legal bearing on your decision-making process, but I share it with you because the town council had a vision for this site. And we had to show before we were allowed to come before you and develop actual site plans. We had to show our concept site plan to the town council and get their ratification of it before we're even allowed to come to planning and zoning. It's a contract term of that option agreement. And so the plan before you is an engineered version with all the details working in of the concept plan that we shared with the town council last year.
Okay, and just the second part of that, and I'm very cognizant of who you represent here. Ha- you know, we're, I won't say Grotton has struggled, but um the vetting has been maybe not as precise. As I've done, maybe my business is, whatever it may be. And, and what's the difference here? Um because it appears to be a very different type of players.
Yeah, so. So um obviously, the Patones have been involved in this, in this property for, for the better part of a decade. But there was an issue up at the, the oral school about backgrounds of developers. And so before OR got involved, the council undertook um a higher level of scrutiny. On all potential contractees. And so to be named a, what we call, under the option agreement, a bona fide developer partner. Um you had to go through a background check. So uh David and his sons um had to go through that background check, which they passed without any issues. They're in defense contracting with EV, so they need to keep, they need to keep their nose, noses clean, so to speak, regardless. So but that wasn't an issue at all, so that has already been done by the, the town manager's office.
Great, thank you. And um Mr. Vice Chair, that's bone for me.
Um what question you made, the fire department was mentioned?
Yeah.
Um no problem with accessing all the buildings, stand heights?
Not, not at all. In fact, we had, um, we've had several meetings with the fire marshal. Uh we've talked to them about fire, uh fire uh department connections, uh even about the landscaping around our buildings. Um uh our EV charging stations um had no issues, all of our turning radiuses and our parking lots. Um meet all the requirements for their trucks, and most importantly, you can get around all of the buildings. That's a problem on a lot of sites. Um it was one of sort of the design, um, um, sort of the, one of the design features that were built in. Obviously, the Water Resource Protection District is the overriding issue. There's two issues really. Making sure that we meet the Water Resource Protection interests, which twenty percent of the land has to be preserved naturally. We can only use surface detention. I can tell you, this would have been a much bigger, different plan if we could have put that, the stormwater underground. We can't do that in this zone. So that plus um the planning and economic development department's, you know, insistence that we had a connection right at the Tollgate. Road intersection, some of the earlier developer partners were really, that was. Road intersection, some of the earlier developer partners was really, that was a real problem for them, um, so. Those two things, you know, were that and the having that sort of. Internal circulation pattern around the buildings for fire and police and emergency protection, sort of the tenants of the design.
Yeah, I, it's, it's a nice design. Um, is it gated even on the main entrance?
No, the main entrance is not gated, but there will be a gate on the emergency access. So that's not a place for people to take shortcuts. That's, that wasn't on the original plans that emergency access, that was added at the request of the fire department.
Okay. Um, and it looks like there was studio, one and two bedrooms. And these are all to be owned, right? There's no rental aspects of these.
No, these are rental apartments.
Oh, these are all rent?
Absolutely, and that, and that's what the market is right now.
Okay.
In this area, I mean, you'll see very, very few sort of, um, condominium, condoized projects right now. These are all rental units.
Okay, alright.
That's consistent with the original RFP, it was really for market rate apartments.
Yep.
For staff, do we have any open town apartments at all comments to this?
No, we actually don't, no, everyone, everyone sat, I know on, on the, on the staff report at that time. Um, I had public works and there said, I talked to him again this morning, they said, no, we're, we're set with everything, all the revised plan. And then Grotton Utility is the same thing, we got the comments sent back from them and the, the few things that, um, they have comments on are really. Not zoning related at all, they're, they're between, um, Grotton Utilities and the applicant.
And we did, just be clear, we did meet with Grotton Utilities, we, I think Tyler and I went and we had seventeen people from Grotton Utilities. In the room, uh, but you know, we made some really good progress on the MOU, which will be put in place. It's not part of zoning, it's not part of your process, it's separate and apart, but. You should rest assured, you should be able to sleep soundly tonight, knowing that this project will have oversight from Grotton Public Utilities. In terms of our stormwater discharge, not just at, at the construction, but post-construction, they will be monitoring to make sure that. Not that Org would ever have an issue with this because of the nature of their company and the quality of the projects they do, but to make sure that those detention basins are properly maintained.
And one of the things that wasn't even, wasn't mentioned, but even as part of those detention basins is access points for. Uh, vehicles to get in there. That was something that both us and Grotton Utilities had mentioned, so it. Again, it's, it's hard to see it on every single detention basin, but that was something that was added to as well to make sure that that maintenance is a big part of this.
And, and you know, I think Jeff commented, I mean, Kevin has done an amazing job with the stormwater plan. I've been involved with three other developers on this site. Who struggled with putting together a plan that worked and met the water resource protection district requirements. And I know Kevin spent countless hours in trying to design something that meet, met all the requirements, but actually can be maintained. After the fact, so I, I really do think it's an exceptional plan. Um, and I think it's, you're gonna have the protections in place to make sure that it's maintained properly for years to come.
Yeah, yeah. This project being five stories high is unusual for, seems like in Grotton. I assume you have backup power for the elevators?
Yeah.
Cause it looks like there was something, is it just one generator or do you have one per building?
Best suited to talk about the generators, and just share about them. They are gonna be propane powered because we're in the water.
Oh, that's good.
Yeah, so we have. Plan, you can see, we have five different generators spread throughout the day with propane tanks directly adjacent to them.
Okay.
So you can see, yeah, where he's pointing with his cursor down there. And to the south, but again as well, and another one next to building five.
Cause it's.
And where are the tanks? Or are those the?
Directly adjacent to them.
Yeah, okay. No, cause it's hard, hard to read the plan on a small screen, so I couldn't see that. No, no, I just wanted to.
Happy to, as a, as one of the technical items, because that's a condition. And I think, uh, Dave, Dave and I talked about this, is, it's, he said that there needs to be any additional landscaping or screening around the propane tanks themselves. Because we did switch, that was an issue that came up in the early reviews, we're happy to add that additional landscape screening.
Yeah, and it looks like you only have one elevator in a building.
Correct.
Is that adequate for?
Yes, a number of units, we, we did a whole elevator study, so we have enough, uh, capacity for. There may be some times where like at peak hours that there's a little bit of waiting, but it's gonna be a really fast elevator too, it's not gonna be like a slow hydraulic elevator.
And I assume you have spare parts, so if one breaks, no, I mean, if one breaks, it's a long walk up.
Yeah.
Up there. So I assume because of that, you're relying on just one, one elevator to get to the top floor.
Yeah, we are. And we'll, we'll make sure we have a good, uh, like Otis or Kone, whoever we end up using. We'll have a good contract with them for maintenance and maintaining it, make sure we don't have downtime, cause that's, that's the last thing we want, is any downtime on an elevator.
Yeah. For, uh, the window glass, is that hurricane proof? There is, does it have to be? No. Cause it sits way up.
What's your inland?
Yeah, but they're up high, they're gonna have strong wind.
You'll find out.
Yeah, and especially not from a zoning thing perspective, from, but from a building side of things, when they apply for building permits, that'll be, if that's, it's, that's an issue.
Just curious, cause we got in trouble with the school building for that.
I think ninety-five is the line.
Yeah, but this, this is a tall building. Subject to strong winds, that's all I have.
Michael. Um, I, it's a. Great improvement from when it was Walmart. I was here and it was a very different application then, thank you. Going back to the, when we did this then, I thought it was a re-subdivision. Application, no, there wasn't. Thought that's what it was, um, and that there was, uh, open space. Involved in that one.
There were more properties involved, I mean, a portion of the Antamino property.
No, no, I remember, I, I've walked in, so that doesn't, I mean, I just, I just wanted to make sure that the, the difference that was there from then and now. And, uh, part of the problem with that application ultimately ended up because they didn't have. That. From what I understood, that approval or the deeds weren't in order or that they weren't. I don't know, it fell apart in that lawsuit that evolved, but that's behind us. Just hopefully.
We've done, you know, there've been.
Yeah, no, no, I, I believe it, it's just that, uh, I think a lot of these questions are valid.
Let's rate those, the combination. Go to slide, the second slide. Yeah, the existing condition slide.
So, these are the two town owned parcels. This is five seventeen and this is five twenty-nine, and these are the two PJNA parcels. This was the only, you only had about a hundred and forty feet of frontage. So you had very constrained access going into this site and you had it at a location that wasn't contiguous, it wasn't across the street from the tollgate road. And so, I think quite frankly, I think it was Paige wrong when he was still here and, um, you know, when, when he was doing the RFP. And I know Deb was involved too, it was, it's the assemblage of these parcels, it is the depth of the town parcel. And the road frontage of the PJNA parcels together creates a development site that is worthwhile to work on. This is a very expensive development because of the amount of rock that needs to be moved and, and, and around, so you have to get a certain number of units even to make it economically viable. Alone, neither of these prod, properties work. Together, you can get a critical mass, and that's why the public private partnership really works in this situation.
Um, walkability, how do you, that fire access road, it, can you walk on it?
Yeah.
Yeah, so that, because it, I mean, it doesn't make sense if you can't, there's, cause there's restaurants down.
Yeah, if you're gonna.
Actually, and other kinds of things.
I'm thinking.
There's sidewalks, that, down the main entrance drive though, and that's, and that's.
Yes, I lost out to the tollgate road intersection.
Yeah, it's just that we've got, uh, you know, there's like a convenience store, there's like potentially, this could, um. Benefit, uh, the restaurant, I don't even know if they're still there, they're. Sorry?
Sorry, you're gonna want to encourage pedestrians to go to the signal across the.
Well, to go across, but then, uh. To the west, to the west of this, there, there's like, I mean, there was like, uh, I know it.
This little office park.
Yeah, there's an office park and there was a restaurant, Chinese restaurant or something. So I just want to make sure, what were you? Asking about the, were you suggesting that the buffers aren't needed?
No, all I'm saying is that we're providing a buffer on the eastern edge, this is this buffer right here. And the land that we're buffering is residentially zoned.
Okay. Yeah, no, I didn't know if you were asking for some.
We're actually providing the buffer even though we're buffering preserved woodland.
Oh, and the phasing, so people are gonna move into building one? Be living in there and we're still gonna be building the rest of the buildings?
Yes.
That's the idea, okay.
It'll be like interior finishes, so.
Yeah, okay, it's not gonna be concrete trucks coming in and earth movers and everything else. Okay. And what's the timeframe?
So we have, we have estimated sixteen months to get the clubhouse. Building one and then two months additional for every, um, additional building, so sixteen months for this. Eighteen months, twenty months, twenty-two months, twenty-four months, which is what our estimated construction timetable was, two year build out.
Okay, so you're gonna be. Get a CO for building one, you're gonna be filling it with tenants.
And the clubhouse, cause we'll have the amenities there.
Gonna be done, and then in, while you're filling that building with tenants.
We're finishing building two.
Eight months, finish them.
Yeah, and then we'll build the next, we'll finish the next one. It's not, just be clear, so there's no confusion, it's not that we, we build one building, we're not doing anything the other, all the other buildings are under construction. They're just gonna come online about two months after each, each other.
I think the right thing to do is think of it as a sequence.
Yeah, I, I get it, how about, uh, paving and things like that, when would that be, would there be like a scratch coat? First coat put there?
So we, we show with temporary paving in places to allow us to have circulation during the phases. But yes, if we build out as the projects go.
Okay, and then a finished coat will be put.
Yeah, absolutely. And to get a CO on any phase, and I think sequence is the right word, but we're using the word phase. You'll have to show that you've completed the work within those phase boundaries.
Yeah, usually when I hear the word phasing, I think that. This could be a multi-year project, you're gonna be putting up the other buildings.
Generally, in most towns, it is, but Grotton has very, Grotton has always looked at phasing very strictly. And so they don't allow you to get a, a CO on building one while you still have building two. Under construction unless you have a phase line. Other towns don't care, rotten, that matters in rotten, so. When I work with developers with multiple building projects, we always try to do a phase plan, just so they don't get hamstrung and have to come back to you and say. Hey, listen, we really wanna CEO for this building, but we're not done with here. And they, you know, I've done that before, I know I've come before you for stuff like that when we didn't ask for phasing at the initial approval stage.
Alright, the only other thing is when you, you said, uh, no snow storage.
No snow storage of, of, there's no snow storage of anything that has chemicals in it.
So that you could have piles of snow if they, because we're not using sodium chloride.
Right, and so we can't have, for instance, um, hazardous chemicals or sodium chloride in snow piles on the property. That's a, that's a requirement of your regulations, and that's why I decided that.
Okay, but it's almost not needed this, cause we're not using sodium chloride.
No, but we just wanted, I wanted to double make sure because there's two different provisions we wanted to show that we made the compliance with.
That's it.
Thank you.
I'm all over the place with this, so, one thing. Because my, I keep crashing by, by the time I get to page one hundred, um, what's, what's the difference? I just want to get on the record for people looking at this, what's the difference in the elevation? Between the back building, say, and the very front building, the front apartment buildings, it's, it goes up quite a bit. All the illustrations make it look flat, and I know it's not anything like that.
It's, it's not, it's not flat.
Well, I can see the topo and each one of those topo lines is one foot, so I, I forgot to count, is it like fifteen foot difference or?
First floor. First floor of this first set of buildings are both at ninety-two, elevation ninety-two, now we move up here. These, this gets pinned over here. Uh, this first floor of these are at a hundred, so these floors are eighteen higher, you can see a little bit of a painting wall.
Gotcha.
Working this patio, and then this one is elevation one oh five, so five, a higher grade than the first floor of the.
Okay, so. Which, which will actually allow those north facing buildings, north facing apartments of which you. I guess you only have about ten percent of your apartments never seeing the sun, which is in these things, it's actually pretty good. Though I don't want one of those apartments, but I get that, but the top floors will be able to see over. The tops of the buildings in front of them, which is not indicated in your plan, so.
There's also considerable distance, you know, from the.
Yeah, I get that, I get.
Those eight foot change, grade changes are spread out over hundreds of feet of depth.
Uh, well, not the, but, not hundreds of feet, those two buildings are kind of fairly close to each other, but, uh. From the back, the back one is, you know, sixty foot and what's that eighty foot part, so I get that. So I, I really do appreciate, just the layout makes it look sort of like a campus quad with the dining halls at the end, so I really do appreciate.
Exactly, it's a much superior design than the previous designs I've worked with, so this is by far the best design that we've put forward.
Well, one of the illustrations that showed, it just had a sign on the amenities building down there, it said mail on it, is this gonna be a central mail? Down there?
Correct, one of the central mail, uh, third floor, the ninety, you'll, you'll drive in, you can pick up your mail and then go.
Okay, but, but my concern about that is that that means that a hundred percent of the people coming back to work will stop at that building first and get their mail.
Correct.
And. That did seem like a bog down right there, if everybody's coming back between five and six, six o'clock. And it's hundreds of apartments, so. I'm assuming you dealt with that, but that one kind of concerned me a little bit, not too many people are gonna go home then walk back to that place to get their mail there. With it, with regard to, yeah, there's nothing, nothing stopping from people walking down the. Emergency other egress, was there anything that precluded being able to drive up to, I, I, I thought it was directional, the way you actually slanted. And it seems like it would have been beneficial for people going eastbound to be able to shoot up that driveway. Was there, was somebody, somebody said not to do?
Standing stand by, that's a, it, it's. It's not a good place to have, um, cars leave.
No, absolutely, no, absolutely, but just entry.
But you do want it to be able to be a. Uh, you know, an, an emergency access or egress two way, so it's got the width, it's also ten, about ten percent grade. Um, which is steeper than, uh, the main ride coming in, you know, considerably steeper than the main. Coming in, so. You know, and from a traffic management standpoint, um, I, I think, just. Having it as a, you know, having a right in, you know, you can go to the. Go right at the, you know, it's, it's not that big of an advantage.
It's not bad, I'm just, it's the extra, it's the extra burden on the traffic, is what I was looking.
Though, it's also, you know, you know what happens in these situations is. You have this right in, there's always somebody who will take it as, and out, and that's a problem. Because in earlier iterations of this project, the main entrance was situated in this general area. And there was queuing issues with the light, so the idea of having an actual active entrance in this area. Has potential conflicts with queuing off to that light, so, so really rather keep that as an emergency access.
And, and it is gated, so, it's so that emergency services prevent it from being used as a, and then.
And with respect to that gate, is, is there's detail is that. Normally the gate would just go from one end to the other, but I think in this case, we would like pedestrians to use it, even though it's not gonna be handicap accessible if it's ten percent, but. It's not your fault, so, uh, you get away with it for a sidewalk. It's great advantage to be able to have pedestrians go down there, so I would think that whatever gate you put on there. Wouldn't make them do the limbo to get underneath there, you'd want to do something to, so they can. It's inviting. That, that's correct, something that makes it inviting, okay.
And this is a follow up to the gating, is the gate at the street? Or at the top, because the last thing you would want is somebody to go up and. At the street or at the top? Because the last thing you would want is somebody to go up it by accident. And then say, oh, I gotta back out onto eighty-four.
I think it showed at the bottom.
Gold star entrance as well as at the top of site. Where there's the uh. The landscape islands. Or you can't see that when you're busy, there's a gate right about my cursors.
Okay.
So on both ends, so no one's gonna drive all the way down.
Alright, so no one's gonna get three quarters of the way up and say.
Yeah, I mean, they're okay with getting signs on there now, but I'm sure, you know, we're working together, they're gonna. Ask us.
You don't, you don't need twelve of them and signs and lights and everything, minimal amount of signs.
Ultimately, this is, that will be in the state right away, so. Off the state traffic administration, we have more than two hundred parking spaces on this project, we have to get major traffic generated permit. So if you act on this application tonight, our next step is going to O S T A to get that permit before we close the box.
Okay. With respect to the signalization that you're going to have to be revising for the intersection. Since you're revising that, I don't remember seeing a crosswalk at that intersection.
There is a crosswalk there today, it was added recently.
Oh, was it? Okay.
Uh, it crosses there, which um, you know, obviously submitting to D O T will provide a signal plan for them for review.
Okay.
Add additional signal heads, but uh they asked for additional pedestrian eventing, but it was added within the last couple of years.
Does it, is it both ways, does it go across uh tollgate too? Cause I, I don't think it does, I don't think it gets you there.
I'm not sure if they have the striping, we're proposing striping in our plan.
Okay.
Uh, but but I know that they have pedestrian signals.
Oh, oh, okay, that that might be the case, but I just wanna make sure that if you're going to the trouble to dig up things and do wires and whatever it takes, that in fact it gets. These hundreds of pedestrians across the street to the pizza place, because that's where they're gonna wanna go, otherwise they're just gonna head across anywhere.
Yeah, I agree, I I think to D O T, they're gonna agree with that.
Okay. Um, crosswalk. And I think that's just a bit, oh, one, there's a detail. That, I'm sorry, I notice this kind of thing, you had, you have three different kinds of retaining walls, two of them are just stacked. Restacked stone up to three feet, and one of them is considerably higher, it's a concrete with a stone facing. And it only shows up on, all we got to see was it's on the landscape plan, I L dash five. I'm hoping it's also on engineering, on a civil engineering plan. And if so, could you please make sure that I L, the the detail on I L five refers to that detail on the civil engineering plan, because that detail is not. It's not complete. It doesn't have a toe on it, I know. It's. I I understand, I, that part I understand, but it's, it's got to show the engineering plan to it, otherwise they'll build it to the landscaping plan.
Exactly the type of technical.
I got it.
Oh, it's absolutely.
Be happy to address that.
And why do I have a fear of that? Let me tell you, so.
I do have one additional after you know.
Okay, that that fits with me, good.
Okay, um, there was a concern with parking and that that you actually have an excess amount of parking?
Uh, we have parking.
I'm showing four sixty-five required.
Yeah, it's within the range.
Yes, it's definitely in the range.
It's below the minimum, maximum is below.
Yeah, four sixty-five, I think is the minimum, and you've got five twenty-seven, sixty-two, you know, extra.
Yeah.
I was just wondering, what we've done before is haven't paved, you know? She's shaking her head.
Yeah, I mean, if you, if you look at what, there's an operational.
Because we're W R P D.
Yeah, I I mean. It it's necessary in a second, but I think ultimately, there's, there's the, always the zoning demand, but there's also operational demand, so. Um, or partners has projects like this throughout the eastern seaboard, and so they have a pretty good handle, particularly in communities like rotten. Of what they're, they have a very detailed tenant profile for this building, they know the number of cars that are coming, they can predict. And so the parking that's provided is really to meet the needs of those people and also have a little bit of overflow for guests. You know, the idea is that you can have friends over or you can have family over. Um, you can have, you know, uh, friends come over on a weekend and still not have a parking situation, so there's always a tension there. Um, I found that, you know. You you meet the zoning, find your way to meet the zoning and then double check to your operational needs, and I think that's where the number comes from, based on their experience in other projects. To make sure that these are rentable units that people want and are desirable.
Yep.
The maximum number allowed goes six sixty-three, we're at five twenty-seven, so we're well below the maximum, we're kind of nicely within that range, but like I was saying.
In that sweet spot, okay.
Still.
Yeah. I just, you have a studio apartment, so I mean, for those units, I doubt there's gonna be any more than one car. But you're right, guests.
Yep. And and in the one bedroom and uh, you know, and the other units, you may have two cars on those, so. There again, there's this tension on that, we try to keep it as. As minimal as possible, um, but also meet the needs of our the tenants, because we want these to be. The most desired units in the, in the.
I'm sorry, I do have two other things, they're not big, it's okay, but one is. In terms of trees. These, I mean, this is on top of a hill. And I'm just wondering how many, I couldn't, I I looked at what trees you have, you'll have a pretty good size and then some ones that will get quite large. Which you need for something sticking up this high. Which ones are the really big ones and how many do you have? It looks like they're kind of sprinkled, and I. As I say, since it was so far in the pack, it kept crashing on me till I couldn't tell. While you're digging that out, I'll ask another question, if it's possible, the property just to the west. Is full of medical offices. It's dental, it's everything else. There's hundreds of people in your apartments that will be using those medical offices. It's the perfect place. Is there some way we can have even an informal way for them to cut across into the parking area? There's only an eight-foot difference.
If we can do it uh, on your rights wise.
That's what it looks like.
Sidewalk isn't that either.
And actually, your best, your best, I believe your best place is kind of. And in fact, right where your hand is, go straight up. And it's right around there, it gets very close and you may be able, that's, that's where it seems to avoid your retention ponds and everything else, so. It seems like it.
Or at least don't preclude somebody.
I I think there there's a couple issues there, one is. We don't have rights to build on the other property at this point, but and there are some great issues, and obviously we have some drainage features here too. But there is a possibility, maybe in this area, there could be some informal connection.
I'm thinking actually just just west of where the pool is, it looked like an opportunity there.
Yeah, right in this area, right here.
To, actually, to your right of that.
Right, right around there, yeah. Which which would actually align with the walkway coming out of the uh. Out of the.
Certainly think a look at that.
I think that would be like a feature.
Yeah, it might be stairs, because that's fairly steep, yeah, yeah. But then it goes back to the point that I think everyone was discussing with the the other egress. Is that if that's made more pedestrian friendly, then that's a pretty quick walk. So I understand cutting through the woods, you know, and stuff to go right there, but it's not a far walk to go down the egress driveway.
I'm actually thinking if you don't, they're gonna do it anyway.
Yeah, maybe.
And so you might as well tell them where to go.
I I think one thing we can do is investigate that issue.
Alright.
If we're working closely with David and and that issue.
Yep, I have it.
Regarding the, regarding the trees, you asked about, you know, how many substantial trees are, as far as the canopy trees, which you see. On the islands and the landscaping, there's seventy-five, I believe, seventy-four, seventy-five, and they include um. Red maples, trident maples, sweet gum, sour gums, and white oak. Um, there is evergreen trees, including um, of which we have forty-two white spruce. Uh, forty-two Colorado blue spruce, forty-four white pine. And fourteen uh, dillias, which are providing. Um, and then a bunch of uh, ornamental trees, dogwoods, uh.
Yeah, you have plenty of thirty footers, but which would normally be fine, but since you have a sixty-foot building on top of a hill, I just wanna make sure these grow up to as. It's nice to have some eighty-foot towering trees in this thing, and they'll be dwarfed by this.
There's some, again, the oats and the white pine, just making, they can really, they, they go, alright, great.
Anyone anything, have anything else?
Alright, so if you're gonna talk about the motion, I I have, I have one revision on myself, um, so the only thing, um. How this was applied for was applied for under five twenty-nine gold star, but obviously there's four properties, so I'd like to add all four properties, I have, I have one rewritten here if you want this one.
Okay.
That has the four properties.
Different than what was sent out today.
Yeah, it, all it is, is so instead of the one that was sent out today says basically to approve uh five twenty-nine gold star, so I wanna include five seventeen, five twenty-nine, five fifty-three, and five seventy-one. Whatever I wrote on there.
Yes. So. Yeah, that's it, okay. Alright. So I will make a motion. To approve site plan S I T twenty-five dash zero 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 one Columbia Crossing, five one seven, five two nine, five five three, and five seven one. Gold Star Highway with the following modifications, any modification to this plan imposed by another federal, state, or local agency shall require additional review by town staff. Or the commission, whichever is appropriate, two, the lots, lots shall be combined and revised deed recorded. Prior to filing the site plan in the land records. Three, the design engineer shall certify that the stormwater management system has been installed per the plan prior to issuance. The certificate of site plan compliance, technical items or technical items as raised by staff shall be addressed, have a second.
Second.
Right, any discussion?
Is there a time limit to to file the site plan under your regulations? Is it, we still have to go through the O S T A process, which is gonna be four or six months, and I just wanna make sure. And I, and I obviously, we can't close until we have that, and I can't merge the properties until I have that, so I just wanna make sure that that's not gonna be an issue, thank you for that.
Uh, there's no discussion, no, no, uh, wave re-reading, so. All in favor?
Hi.
Any opposed? Any abstentions? It passes. Thank you.
Thank you so very much.
Nice job, guys.
Yeah, very good job, very complete package, we appreciate it, one of the best since I've been here, so.
We were thinking of you.
If you can do it in twelve months, I'd be.
Probably another four hundred at Pleasant Valley, depends on what comes out of executive section.
Very good templates, what happens is people fit into those templates and succeed.
Does anybody know if Sue is still out there?
Yeah. So maybe we would wait a second.
The standard leaves.
Pass it towards.
Okay.
You got the easy part. Very impressive.
I'll do my next trip.
That's how you clear a room.
The town council meeting? Some most other soon people for one. Yeah.
I'm impressed.
No, I'm right.
So we're down to um, oh, should I call him? Okay, you're good. We're in the old business.
Yeah, and you gotta remove one person from. Who replaced you is no longer.
Oh, okay. Anybody?
Standard is very good.
So, um, old business. Now, new business. New application. We have one new application and self-storage facility on Gold Star. Okay. Uh, referrals. We have the Stonington referral. Right, this is an existing restaurant and apparently you'd have to get site plan approval to add a liquor license. Always out, so that's what it says.
That little corner thing there.
Does anyone have any issues with it?
So Tom, is it existing restaurant?
Yes.
Right, what, what existing restaurant?
It's a bad, it's just.
It's a.
If I'm thinking of the right property, it's this little strip with a bunch of different things in it.
Yeah, but they're talking about the one corner. Which sells lobster and hot dogs or something like that.
It's a, yeah, Mystic Oysters, actually.
It's the back side of the lawn building.
Now adding, trying to add liquor to it.
Close to the liquor that didn't the oyster.
So any comments?
Yeah.
No, okay. Now the uh school street, um. Oh, I'm, yeah, the school street. Variance application, um, it's basically, it's an existing house that'll be torn down, rebuilt to FEMA standards. Um, and there are front, they're requesting a front and side yard setback, and they're also going to increase the non-conformity because they have to do a deck and stairs. And because they're raising up the building, um, this is in the W W zone in Lower Point and residential structures, residential is not allowed use, so they're expanding the. Does anyone have any problems or? Questions, objections?
Turn it down. It's falling down or?
I I I don't know.
Okay. Looked as if they were just sort of massively mod, changing it, it looked like they were kind of keeping some of the structure and lifting it. Yeah, maybe it's an illusion.
Yeah, it probably needs to be weighed.
No, it would just will be garage underneath, you know, it's, it's, all that's happening, just like across the street.
Yeah, and it's in the velocity zone, so it has to like, I mean, they would hit fifty percent on that.
Yeah.
You know, so.
No problems, no violations, okay, thank you. Now, I guess um. Have a report on the chair. Um, I think first I just wanna say thanks to everybody for the time and efforts and, you know. Intensity and cooperation and goodwill amongst us all. Tonight, I thought it was really remarkable, the number of accomplishments, you know, so those are two big deals we got done, I mean, thanks to the staff. It was nice to, even though I say it out there, it was nice to think about. It's much appreciated. Um, and I was gonna say for the meeting on Thursday, and they're gonna talk about time commitments, but um, all the worthy calls. Um, we're gonna have what Hawaiian shirt optional. Just in case you have one of your claws. It's not mandatory.
So the details on that are at five thirty, right? And we're in room one instead.
Correct.
And there's food potentially.
Correct.
And that's everybody.
Yes, you are the steering committee, that's correct, plus Clint, yes. I think she's have a luau.
Gotta bring her out here.
And so it's first you went in presenting.
Yes, yeah, that is correct.
And then public. But there's no like discussion on it.
And and the public comment is written only, written only, that's right. And we'll get that ahead of time, whatever you have, I guess. And you, and that, that's in the packet, yeah, I definitely have one piece of.
Right.
Oh, just that one piece, okay.
How long do you think those interviews?
They will, um, will be meeting at eight thirty.
Eight thirty?
Thursday, and they will.
I'm gonna be here all day.
You are.
Well, the meeting at twelve fifteen, I think we've baked it a little bit at the time, just discuss once in a while.
So.
Morning.
All right.
Yeah.
Hour each, and then.
Yeah.
So other than reading the documents, there's no real input from the planning, the zoning commission, the owners, correct?
No, they they won't welcome your input.
Yeah, I've got pages.
Questions and.
What for P L C Ds?
Yeah.
Now's the time to dive in, what are we missing and both?
Absolutely.
It's extensive, it's an extensive PowerPoint, there's a lot of information.
Yeah, it really is.
I've been PowerPointed this guy, so.
Yeah. Um, do you need anybody else for those focus groups?
No, we've got enough, we're good. Yep. Okay, and then does anybody, the commission have something they'd like to? Record?
Nope.
Vacation. Now, we're more to staff. No, I don't think we have anything, I mean, we've got a lot of meetings coming up for you guys, right? I mean, it's a busy week, and then we will have the May eighth public meeting, we're just starting to advertise that now. Um, yeah.
Just on the Thursday.
Right.
Consulting teams.
All right. Very good, okay. Hope there's nothing else, just have a motion to adjourn.
Second.
Okay.